Okay, we're going to call the meeting to order at six P M on Thursday, September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. If I can ask everyone to please stand for the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the state of Texas.
Just before I start combinations, I want to welcome Melissa to our first meeting. Congratulations. All right, any combinations?
Okay, we'll move on to public comment. Close the public comment.
I'm sorry, we didn't do well. We probably have this this meeting.
Yeah. All right. Yesterday, the high school had an evacuation drill during magic block, which went very smoothly. It was a very busy week for sports this week. Both soccer teams as well as volleyball, uh, field hockey, golf, uh, each had three games. The boy's soccer is currently five and two. Girl's soccer is four with two ties, four wins and two ties. Volleyball has five wins and one loss. Field hockey is three with has three, three wins, two losses and one tie. Girls cross country is on a roll with three wins. Boys cross country has had a tough start to the year with three losses, but the rest of the season is looking up. And football is one of their first two games, and they're on their way to Fri- um, this Friday evening versus Shepherd Hill over by Rhode Island. The marching man has begun prac- has begun practicing and will perform at the next home football game. In other news, the junior class has opened up to donations for their class auction, which will take place later this year. Uh, school counselors have been conducting senior seminars with the senior class about the college application process. And several colleges have begun visiting M H S, which will happen throughout November. Uh, now through November. Uh, senior college parent night was held yesterday evening and a financial aid night is planned for October twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Mo. Okay, any other district updates, Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, good evening. First, I'd like to welcome me member Melissa Clotes. Uh, she and I have met a couple times already, and I'm confident she'll be great addition to the committee, so welcome to working together. Uh, school is in full swing, fall sports are underway, it's been deserved from well. Uh, our open houses have been taking place. Uh, this is an exciting part of the year when things uh start settling in and we begin to hit our stride as we move through the fall. I've attended all the P T O P C O meetings with, uh, so far, the exceptional vets, which I believe I'm scheduled to attend in October. Yeah, um, and was excited by the turnout, um, so many characters that are just really well attended, um, which is great. So thank you for all the support you provide to our students. Um, Rosh Hashanah begins Monday, September twenty-second at sundown, so I want to wish, uh, take a moment to wish members of our community happy weekend. Uh, it's also a span of carriage month beginning since October fifteenth, so I just want to acknowledge that. Um, the district has been conducting Alice drills again, as uh, we just mentioned. Uh, each building, my director in collaboration with our pol- police and fire departments has conducted a full evacuation drill for the new school year, a lockdown drill in the middle of the school year, and then another full evacuation fall. Um, it's a sensitive affairs that we need to do these drills, but it will always ensure that we are putting safety and security of our students and staff first. Uh, doing the drills is one way to be as prepared as possible should catastrophic catastrophic event occur. Uh, Jesse, uh, attendance accountability reports come out tomorrow, so we'll be taking a look at that data to see how we fare with last year's attendance across the district. I hazard a guess the numbers will not be not be great given the, um, absolute issue of the makeup days. Um, but we should still be able to determine how we get strength. Uh, some more to come on that after the analysis, um, it's completed. Um, I'll be providing more focus updates oriented to information community and I alone in a few minutes, while this committee is coming together. Um, I'm sending out that newsletter tomorrow, so, uh, in that newsletter, I think so, community, with some community members, uh, to join the team. On October ninth, I will be participating in the M G H surf, which is substance use and risk related factor survey. The main survey is administered by M G H. And there will also be supplemental questions via M H S anonymous school performing surveys that ask questions about our students' mental health and substance use behaviors. That survey is completed anonymously and confidentially, although students have the option to provide identifying information should they want to follow. So. Purpose of the survey is to provide data to give our community a sense of needs and strengths of our student population. Establishing for the youth programming or curriculum assemblies that just offer main events. Um, and there's about a hundred and fifty districts in the state participating in the survey. Um. This is done during magic block devices on a day four. This is all from information that's sent out already, so I just kind of pick up. I'm gonna show that language paraphrase a little bit. Other explicit directions regarding how parents can opt their students out of the survey, they still choose. Like the Gina Harf for her are more coordinating this important data collection tool, and she will share the results in the spring. I think I mentioned this last time, it's in the spring. We have a rate for G M H tally of the results of their section. Uh, the board of health worked with town leaders and community partners and developed a needs assessment in collaboration with U S dark, uh, U S Boston, sorry, Thomas, that's my way. I titled Tom C A H M, for creating a healthier model head. Uh, I was part of, uh, helping develop some of the questions, right? I just wanted to share that, uh, they're doing, uh, finish up the flyer now. And once that's finalized, we send it out from the town to everyone in town eighteen years of age and older, but we will also bring our digital backpacks, so I think we're just gonna get that out to folks. So, and I want to share that's another great way to we. Our collaborating town, um, which is, which is awesome. Um. I always try to be reflective and strive to model that for administrators and staff, someone to share. On the bottom of an email I sent out to staff, I think it's pertinent during this time, um, so if you're just indulge me for a second. Uh, the email I sent out was just as simple as it all. I feel compelled to share that we be mindful of how and when we share our views regarding political and social commentary. We are all representatives of Marblehead Public Schools, and we should continue to strive to model understanding, acceptance, belonging for each other, our students and community members. Sometimes this is difficult, and sometimes we need to reflect on what and how we communicate. I appreciate being the educational leader of the district that is leading the way. Thank you for all that you do. Obviously, with the times and things that are happening, I thought it was, um, it was good to send out a message of that, thank. Um, and then I tried to end my updates with a positive note, uh, so we got a little, little bit more stuff to share, but, um, I think it's important. I thought about ways to acknowledge and celebrate our staff, and I'm working on developing a process to nominate staff for for going, you know, above and beyond the work that they do. And until I craft that tool, get into place, I asked the principals administrators, um, to send me names of staff that they thought should get kind of an extra shout out. Um, of course, this is never easy for administrators, and at home now, this is so much good work going on by so many great people, um, but I want to share out some of the kudos. Um, so I skipped the combination at the beginning because this is a little bit more, um, personalized and and expansive. So from Scott Williams Village Principal, um, he says, I would like to acknowledge Zach Dixie, who is a building-based substitute teacher at Village. Every day Zach comes to work with a smile consistently going above and beyond to meet the needs of our students and staff. He supports our general education population, works very closely with our special needs kiddos, there are E B A program. Zach is truly committed to Village, we're lucky to have him here every day, Mr. Dixon. Um, from Dr. Carlson, Christine Chekhouse, he consistently goes above and beyond and involved, demonstrating outstanding dedication to students, staff, and families. She works tirelessly to ensure transfers are accurately and timely, or accurate and timely. Let's ask her for his both precision and persistence. Christina has been a invaluable source of support. Her new staff have provided guidance and encouragement to help them feel welcomed and set and successful. She also brings the voice of equity to resolving issues, ensuring that decisions are thoughtful, fair, and centered on student needs. Her unwavering commitment to students and families reflects deep care and professionalism, making a lasting positive impact in the school community. She also shares that Mike Giardi has made a significant difference at M H S through his unwavering support of students both in and out of the classroom. As a dedicated football, basketball, and baseball coach, he builds strong connections with student athletes and helps them grow as individuals and team members. In his role as lead teacher in the math department, like Michael supports students' learning needs, class during magic block and after school, always going to extra miles to ensure their success. He also serves as a mentor, providing guidance and encouragement that inspire students to reach their potential. Michael's leadership commitment, care, and body, the very best of M H S. Um, and one more from Dr. Carlson, Danielle Mosher, um, has and has made an outstanding impact on our school community through her dedication to improving and supporting school culture. She has thoughtfully created signs, opposed just highly of staff and students, fostering a sense of pride and belonging throughout the building. Danielle works closely with new staff to ensure they feel supported, offering guidance with free books, magic blocks, scheduling, and hall pass. Her efforts helping, uh, her efforts help colleagues feel confident, prepared, while the creativity and positivity create a welcoming environment for everyone. Danielle's commitment, collaboration, and spirit shine through it all. She does, making her an invaluable part of our community. Since Superintendent Ferrera shared that our instructional coaches, Rebecca Brand, Angie Graziano, Mary La Blank, Emily Perez, and Danielle Moja are working hard to, um, help ensure our teachers, instructional assistants, and students have a successful launch of the school year. Thank you to our instructional coaching team for supporting the amazing teaching and learning happening in all of the schools. Uh, Matt La Fanchea, and Splat Vets, shares the Jay, Uda- Udodaro. Um, Jay has been a valuable resource in planning and executing safety vertical at M B M S. Jay has provided the input and resources of helping to design procedures around student movement during fire and safety drills. Uh, he also wants to celebrate Tony Callahan, um, who has worked hard, Sunshine Club, to provide our colleagues with a tremendous level of support as we have transitioned into new school year at M B M S. I thought that was pretty cool. He's, he's brand new and he's just getting to know his staff and, uh, but he was able to kind of, you know, um, highlight a few great folks there. Um, and then, uh, I respect the assistance, particularly Sabrina Polito. Um, she would like to recognize our team chairs, Tony Russo, actually Lehman, begging the quantity, Trina Chinahong. Our organization and efforts in working with staff and families to support students as we started this year. Also, just cheers to Victoria Ryan for helping support our school. So, um, you know, the other principals are sure of sending me stuff on, and I'll share those probably next meeting, but I just want to share that that would be a great way to end my updates. Positive notes. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, you know, Superintendent, that was, I'd be like the shout outs and, and, you know, I would encourage you to.
Yeah, I think, you know, I, I've been thinking about for a while, you know, um, and just I think it's important to celebrate staff, and my idea is just to kind of come up with a, you know, Google form that can do a link, um, so like the community members think, well, um, community members and staff celebrate each other. Um, I think it's something that's a great way to just kind of just recognize folks. It's, it's simple, but it's also, I think, I appreciate that.
All right, you have our, our next item, enrollment update.
Oh, I think this, yeah, um, actually, since there was a couple iterations, uh, we printed out, it was fun, just some make sure I look at the same thing.
Just different line of attention, I'll share.
No, no, um, it was the one. When it, yeah, it was a, I think, a couple of these. So, um, Frank, that should be.
I was gonna do it, but I'm
You have it?
I have it. Awesome. I'll share it with you because I can't, I'm not able to share my screen.
I don't see the request. Looking forward. We're gonna open up for some nation, all right? I just, I just
Thank you. Do you got it? Do you want me to take? Okay, perfect. Thanks, Alan.
All right, well, that's coming up. Um, here we talked a little bit about enrollment, um, piece here in Marblehead Schools. You know, clearly it's been, um, slightly dipped in enrollment, um, especially from last year to this year. So we, we started, um, kind of follow up some of that, and this was being shared tonight. Obviously, it's an ongoing discussion because we really need to, um, continue to dig into the, uh, into the data to say, you know, what kids at which grade level are going where and ending up where and why. So those are questions you're gonna obviously be asking more deeply of, you know, schools and parents and things like that. But this is just, this is just an overview at this point of, of where we are. So, um, you can go to the next slide, please. So the current enrollment overview, a total K to twelve enrollment, uh, it's two thousand five hundred thirteen students, for the district, which of our schools are outlined there. So there are ninety students at Marblehead High, um, three fifty-one at Vets, eighty-four Village, four forty-five at Brown, and three eighteen at Glover. And then, um, this other programming that accounts for, I think it's a hundred and seven students, so thirty-one at homeschool, forty-six are out of district, and then there's thirty students at private placement. We have to count those because, I mean, there are so much students, we have to, um, we have to make sure that if they're receiving any kind of programming from the district, that we count them. So potentially, you know, all school students, even though they're home school, they still can develop themselves with that critical activity, things, sports and things like that, if they, if they, um, maintain, the things they need to maintain. Uh, similarly with private placements, they may be private places, but when they provide specialized services, like so, for instance, maybe a kid away to our school that boots, you know, speech and language or something like that, where we'd still be, um, providing some old services. It's not frequent, but there are some, so. That's, sometimes the numbers look a little, um, a little off because of that.
That's a question.
Yeah.
Do you look at this like as total enrollment when you're comparing your rear change inclusive of the additional programs? Because it feels like it'd be a fair misleading for like what the actual capacities people, schools versus outside of the schools. Is it just done on an, on that basis, that's included in all of those things?
The second.
Second.
Yeah, that, that's the report's out that way. So we kind of have to, we kind of follow the way that he does it, and I'm trying to pull up. That's okay. And some of that, we'll talk about a little bit, but like some of this is the NASDAQ projections are a part of like how we kind of look at trend, you know, overall trends, but that's, that's really more the parts of, um, population stuff. So we look at birth rates, death rates, you know, kindergarten jobs, so. Um, so the next slide, please, um, is enrollment distribution by school level. So we just broke it down, elementary school, pre K to three, so again, Brown School is four hundred forty-five, where the largest class is under four. Um, grade one, grade two is a hundred and seven, but our school's three hundred and eighteen students. Enrollment enrollment, grade three is eighty-five, combined, we speak, almost seventy-six students, so we spent both down. Uh, middle, middle level, which is things, for the way that Jesse does, from middle level, becoming the village and vets. So Village goes four hundred eighty-four, and you can see the break down there, we're four, it's a hundred thirty-three, this grade is one sixty-nine, this grade is one sixty-two. And that's just three hundred fifty-one students with seven students, we're at seven, nine, we're at eight. Uh, should do that, I don't think I said this, but this is my snapshot time, so you won't get them rolling on reports on Mondays, or if you can go on Sunday, you can come Monday, and they can change from one to one, so, you know, this, we always saw a little bit of, so sometimes the numbers, like, when we look at this, particularly pretty fun for a kid. So somewhere, no. But, uh, high school is, you know, we, like I said, grade nine is two ten, grade ten is two one, grade eleven is two twelve, and grade twelve is one eighty-five. I think we had a pretty large, um, graduating class last year, which I think accounts for some of, some of the difference. Uh, and then the next, next slide. So, um, enrollment change, notable enrollment change at transitional grade level, so grade three, spring twenty-five to grade four, fall twenty-five, we minus fifteen students. Grade six, spring twenty-five to grade seven, fall twenty-five, we're down nine students in grade eight, grade nine are fifteen, uh, minus fifteen students. So that, those transition rates, we're four, seven to nine, whereas one of the worst, the biggest dips. Now, with grade eight to nine, you know, clearly that's, that's students that go in the, you know, um, private school or that's its tech, um, so, you know.
Um, did you do this for every grade or just these grades? Because I haven't had a chance to dig all it, but you know, we, we actually, as of this week, have an eight percent decline. Uh, we have over two hundred students less today than we did in June. So it might be helpful to do this across all.
Yeah, we did, we, we highlighted the three, three, um, three largest areas for this discussion, but we just sort of continue to go into the deeper dive, um. But I think, you know, when we look at, if we did, I agree, there's some tax, and they, they vary. Sometimes it's a five piece of everything. So it's, it's, it varies, and then, uh, private school, uh, is also obviously where, where folks go with, you know, and they say, we'll, 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 we'll get into a little bit more, um, detail as we move forward, because I want to make sure that, um, we're, we're understanding why, like, that, that's third grade to fourth grade transitions will be a year now, like that, obviously. You expect it to need to die a little bit. Um, those two other areas, that's why we kind of had it, it's kind of a lot of ways to, to have that kind of, you know. Um, so then we look at the historical trends, right? Next, next one. Um, so this kind of goes through from, you know, about nineteen to current, um, you can see that we've dipped a decent amount from, you know, two thousand, nineteen, twenty school year, twenty-nine, hundred sixty-three students to current, uh, twenty-five thirteen. So there's a a lot of pretty good size, um, increase there, and the key periods, again, we highlighted the higher ones, so nineteen, twenty, twenty-one was a eight point seven percent decrease, twenty-one to twenty. Twenty-one, twenty-two is three point eight, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five was another two, and another two, I would want to, here. So, you know, all in all, it's, that's, that's why I should.
I think it's also important to note historically, I think twenty seventeen, what's gradually passed was probably the peak of this sort of generation, where we had almost thirty-three hundred students in the district. So I mean, this is, this is like, we're not bearing the lead here. This is a, you know, huge thing, and this seems to be a little bit higher this year. Not as high as twenty nineteen, but we're at close to eight percent, seven point nine percent. Wow, so.
Yeah, and it's, it is, it's concerning for sure. And I think, you know, and I'm, I'm, we're gonna call, you know, what it is, because it's, it's, it's nothing to hide, it's just, this is, this is a different level for sure. Um, this is trending, allowing a lot of public schools, most public schools, but, um, we're talking about, as we, we have spoken about, let me say, what can we do differently to keep kids, you know, maybe and going elsewhere than, than tomorrow at the high school, we have to look at, you know, private schools calling kids at certain grades for shared reasons, charter school, you know, um, you know, there is a trend across the nation that charter schools are, are, are increasing their alone as well. So there's a lot of factors, um, but that's why, you know, we're looking at the, the overview of this, but we're gonna, to unite and, and talk, um, to that, but I'm gonna kind of just really go down uh, to try to start coming up with ways, like, you know, we, we talked last year, uh, with the administrators, so again, this year around the transitional race, that's always, you know, whether it's middle school, high school, um, finish the middle school. What kinds of things can we do to make sure that students understand what we have to offer? So there's a lot of things that we could, you know, um, take, high school, you know, leads a program in, you know, sports and, um, prom, band, etcetera, and have them, you know, really focus on a seven, eight grade school, so they know what's, what to expect coming up. Um, a lot of this happens, but we have to just kind of look at it again. So that's, that's usually one thing area that we can look at, kind of, both, both of the, 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 the lesson of departure, right, maybe a little, so. Look into, you look at that.
I find the grade-specific numbers more helpful, because otherwise I think you have to find a way to spread out. When Jen's referencing, there are just fewer children than, or ten years ago. From, you know, we can't solve for that problem, but we should be looking at and addressing students, if families are choosing to send their children elsewhere, why and what?
Well, I don't know if we necessarily know that. So I've asked for census, which is very easy to get. So I've asked for just for my identification from the town clerk, so we can get it by age, by, by birthday. So I think, and I gotta go through the math, go through the dates, but if we get, we could get a census report, uh, for, like, pre K to twelve. How many students, how many, uh, children of that age live in this town? And then compare that to what our census is. Um, preschool jumped out at me last year, we graduated, um, a hundred and thirty, I think, preschool, pre K into I guess, to kindergarten, and this year we have seventy-six. So that was, that's a big, you know, that's a big, uh, loss. And I think, you know, there's the whole, you know, the universal issue that gives clearly declining enrollment. The question of why is important, right? Because I would love to be able to educate every child that lives in this town, we can, and we should, it'd be great. But meantime, we're not, and so we have, you know, there are budget implications to that. There's, you know, there's opportunities, right? We have declining enrollment, we have budget that you know, the town meeting provides to us, um, and we have opportunity to leverage that budget with decline.
Yeah, it all has to get pushed forward, and I think, um, and everything that everyone thinks, you know, that's all, I mean, typically, some of the work at fine. So I think, I think, um, you know, the question about the census and how many kids, and there's like we, you know, when you look at the numbers, like, when you say we had fourteen sixteen, two thousand six hundred and seventeen students, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, we have twenty-five, sixty-four students, right? So you know, you can see that that, that one of the students left, but like, to your point, a census will actually, yeah, it tells how many, how many school age kids there are. Um, so how many more missing, you know, which, you know, a lot more than that, you know, but, you know, we have, we have to fly, we have to, we're educating somehow, to making sure that every kid that lives in this district is educated, and they're educated more at schools, if they leave more at schools, we have the, you know, the, the, wherever they go on S request records, so we know, we know if they've left, they've gone, it's the same, different to private school, but, uh, you know, to charter school, to whatever. Um, so that's, that's the data that we'll look at more closely.
Do we do that?
Yeah, it's just, yeah.
Do we report that?
So it's not, it's not really the, or, I mean, some of the report, along with this, I mean, to the, to the state, you know, the actual status.
I mean, we could report, right? X number of students went to the you've private school, X number moved out. It's really, you either go to private school, you got a town, or you home school. With all intensive care. And it might be helpful to her.
Yeah, and I think, um, yeah, and that's, that's what I'm talking about. That's, it's, it's, you know, if you, if you're, if like, there's a grade level that you're, that was just phenomenal, two or three kids, like, okay, that's not too big a concern, I mean, this is an overall picture, but when you look at like the three grade levels that we talked about, there, there's a preponderance of, 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 incident. And it's curious, it's curious why, and why it's six, why haven't what it's been on. Um, so, yeah, those are all, those are all things where we're, we're on.
But another thing that's clear is, I think this year's seniors passed a hundred eighty-five. But like in twenty seventeen, I think, again, I think that was the peak, and that class was like two hundred and sixty-five, I think.
People were like two forty last year.
So it's two forty last year. And then you look at nine, eleven, tw- nine, ten, eleven, high school, they're all over two, it's not much, but it's over two hundred, and then K through eight, or pre K through eight, there's no class over two hundred. So it's clearly whatever it is, that they don't live here, they're not, they're not born, they're not, whatever, they're, they're we're not seeing classes over two hundred.
And that's the next slide, they're on the NASDAQ, which we did on the one that, oh, yeah. But, sorry, that's a little question. Do you guys look at enrollment trends excluding the additional programs? Because like, it's down fifty-one students this year, but a hundred and seven of capacity looking out here, people that are maybe just coming to like, you want the program or not. Do we ever look at it?
Yeah, we, we also, yeah, so, so a lot of, like, especially the, that's, those are kiddos that may be here today, and then have a, have a team meeting tomorrow, and next year, and then we reached around the district, and we're, there was another, yeah, or vice versa, yeah. So the, 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 uh, idea and plan is to, to continue to enter this type of programming, which still, we're going through some growing pains still, um, but when we get to a point where I feel comfortable that we, that our programs are solid enough to start having those meaningful conversations with parents and say, hey, this program is solid, where we have kids in it, bring kids back, and anyone can move to get them back in. My own philosophy is we need to educate our kids with our age range of district. It's, and that's, to me, that's not my thing, it's a being, like, that's not the reason for me. It is the most sense to do that. We're not, a hundred percent not there, but we will, I have a hundred percent hope that we will be the next, of we is, it's.
I'm wondering if these patterns and declines would look different if we stripped out that group of students, there's an issue sort of, yeah, like totally different. Yeah, that's, that'd be worse. Yeah.
Can we look at the class? That's obviously something very important for us, right, to the class, so, from different, it's right for teachers, for balance and equity in terms of students. Um, traditionally, for where we place our supports, right, where we, most students need additional support, so we look at all that. Jim, can you tell me your pre K number from last year?
I thought I saw that, that we, I, if there's a, is it a hundred and thirty or a hundred and thirty-one?
I'm, I'm, we had thirty-three at Brown School, and
Yeah, so I go by I think the test reports, unless the test reports for somebody, I don't have June second. In June second, just the last report before the graduating seniors. Once the seniors graduate, the reports are off. Because, yeah, the seniors are gone, really, and we don't have the new kindergarten.
I know, so it's, it's when we have our students in for the student services testing. So we had eighteen, I think, fall under that, had a, and then forty-two came in for an assessment.
So you're recording them as pre K?
They, they all.
You have, you have to, you have to categorize them when you're, when you're either providing some sort of a service or an assessment, so they have to go somewhere.
Right, so it was a week before.
So if we just look at the bottom of just, um, Brown School and Glover School, what I'm seeing here is under, um, so for example, Brown School or Zisson, and then the bottom thirty-three, and then Glover, thirty, I just want to make sure.
So that, that's, that's seventy-one, that's the, I mean, yeah.
Okay, so then, I don't, and I don't know where we've lost kids, and we should probably
Well, I'm not treating that if it's
Kindergarten is down too.
Yes, and you'll see that with what we know it's going to be for
This year's kindergarten?
Yes, and
And that's, that's only, that's mainly, uh, so, and the other thing too, like, pre K will have a flow a bit too, I think, that's why when you were saying, I heard something, that sounded really off to me, so I didn't look at that.
That's not, we have a tutor.
Well, yeah, it's, 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 that's how, it's how I spend, that's why, that's why when you ask me the question, I need to look at this a little bit closer, some of that, some of those numbers look a little bit odd, you know. So, so, you know, kindergarten, you know, kindergarten will have a flow, or preschool will have a flow, it's kind of like, oh, you know, gonna, it's, you know, they're coming here, but it's supposed to make, so they, they start giving, like, this world. Supposed to make, say, they, they start giving them this world, and then they come back to kindergarten. So those things can, so. In the pre K, pre K, um, numbers, I mean, we wanna see those higher, just, you know, see. So, you know, when we look at, go to the future projections of next one phase. So this is, this is kind of where the next next, uh, report comes in. So they look at short term, long term, and then growth factors. So the short term. Um, twenty six, twenty seven, they're projecting twenty five, twenty one students, which would be, I think, be two, two point one. And then the, the following years, uh, already based on, uh, twenty five, thirty seven, which would be a point six. On the longer term. Uh, it looks like, you know, within, they do like a ten year projection. So within ten years, it looks like we'll be kind of back up to like. Three thousand seventeen ish, um, numbers now.
Well, ten years from twenty twenty.
Twenty, yeah. So. Right, sorry, like a full, a full tenure for there. And so I think, um, so I've been, if the projections are. Apparently, I know which Nez that generally is, that's pretty, pretty close, um. I, I mean, I've over the years, I mean, within like ten, twelve kids. Uh, so that's, that's, that's hard to see that, you know, hopefully that that trend, trends are hard. And we have to, you know, we have to kind of look at that, um, to make sure that we're. Everything that Jen just talked about, staff here, so. And then the growth factor staple work rates projected, I mean, you will project one sixty, one sixty three, really, it's a semi creation pattern. This for a moment, they look at, that's what they're saying. So. Uh, it's, they're pretty. That's matrix, they look at, it just, it helps us to find when. Data, year to year, a lot of, um, they, they base, you know, D E S I, when we look at the D E S I numbers, that's a lot, that's usually a total of same. Lot changing in October and September. And then the last thing is just, uh, as that project said, it just. So all in all, yes, the meta message here is we're down enrollment. Uh, we're gonna continue to take a deeper dive into the areas that are, are the most concerns for us. And look at and try to call some reasoning and ideas and thoughts, and then also work with the administration, the teachers. Say, what, what can we do differently to kind of? Keep people, or even keep the kids here, um, stay home and graduate. Um, and I think, you know, it's, I'm more discussion, it's sure, it's sure it is, uh, you know, that, that a district placement numbers. They can, they go up and down too. I think, you know, like last year, we were at like fifty seven, I think that the district were a little bit down. Forty six now, so that's, that's, that's. Uh, but happen to have more conversation chat.
What's the twenty five, twenty six projected percentages? That's what we really wanna know, right? To, to issues of enrollment.
Yeah, so, um, just plus two point one percent. Pretty steady, really. Um, we just wanna add in also, like, you know, with, with a focus on sharing the great work that's happening in marble kind of public schools. We've been very intentional of that. I mean, our high school just scored thirty three out of a hundred, um, for the weekend news, and we'll be sharing more about that soon. And, and all of a sudden, the new scene, we've had some really great local press. I do feel that we're really trying to be thoughtful and strategic in the communication. Um, you know, newsletters and, 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 you know, sharing broadly. So I just wanna appreciate the numbers. You know, for what they are right now, but we're always gonna continue that conversation about showing the great work that is happening in.
And I think, I think that goes hand in hand with, you know, our collaboration with the community. I think, you know, it's been, been one of my pushes since I've been here. It's really like, how do we? How do we partner with collaborate, discuss, um. You know, everything with community members too, because the more they hear and see that we're actually, you know. Listening and, and trying and to, to do things better. Um, you know, when we're finding ways to just really kind of hear student voice, talk about that. Our staff voice, how do we, how do we continue to get important, hear what staff say, and how do we address concerns and staff? Um, you know, there's, there's things that are going super really well this year. There's some areas that we're, that we're really focused on and everyone's. Talk schools, there, there, this marriage that we're struggling with. This marriage will really, really well. So celebrate the positives. How do we, how do we focus on providing extra resources and support to those areas that are struggling? Um, and I think when we do that and people see the winner's story. Um, that, that's a good thing, that, that, that's how we grow and we can build. Sustainability.
Talking about socializing. It's really important to get some of that demographic data that Jen was talking about. There's things that are beyond our control.
And also as we're having these important conversations about staffing and budgeting, you know, taking it to account, the enrollment data. I think it's really important that we balance not overcorrupting, you know, these next type of predictions. Have proven to be reliable and they're showing. That enrollment will start to trend upwards, not to where it used to be, but in that direction.
You know, I think when we have, and we have conversations, you know, we're gonna, people, we can be having a bunch of conversations and all that, you know, that's kind of will tie into that, right? So, but like, if you look at. You know, say like a certain classroom has seventeen kids in it, and another one has twenty four kids in it, and another one has eighteen kids in it, and they're all the same grade, but all the same school. You know, that, how you, not really a way to consolidate those three classes, right? Without, you know, making it. Twenty nine kids. So you have to be mindful of that too. So there's, there's areas for sure that the numbers are low in certain classrooms. The other part of that discussion is why are they low? Um, that could be purposeful. So. Just say, for instance, we have four, four first grade classrooms. One might be a seventeen, one might be a twenty two, twenty two, or nineteen. That seventeen. Could be purposeful. It could have kids that maybe have greater needs than a classroom, provide extra support. Less students, I mean, that's, that's generally a way to address some of that extra needs, um. So those things happen too. And then you look at, you know, sometimes AP classes and level, because they're, they're lost for some kinds, you know, special education classes need to be small. So when you just look at just the number of, about the discussion, they can be misleading as well. So I just preface that as we get, get into a bunch of conversation. Cause that's important kind of being.
But quickly gonna turn back up. So we wanna be mindful of that too.
Thank you.
So is there, a couple of quick questions? So, you know, obviously you said you were gonna do some more detailed analysis of the data. You know, when that'll be ready by, and you can kind of come back and provide that, you know, more detailed perspective on the data.
Yes. Probably not the thirtieth meeting, but sure. I just wanna be mindful, I don't wanna rush it because, you know, the, the, the issue is, is, you know, you can look at our data manager, the whole, whole sort of thing. That would be awful. And we, we started. Um, but I wanna make sure that overall reporting is, you know. Fully accurate. So we wanna make sure we have the time to, to pull it down.
When it's reasonable for us to expect, to be able to come back and let us know.
Yeah, and I can let, you know, I mean, we have a conversation all the time. So I go, you know, hey, we're, we're good, we'll be good to go. At this point, so.
The other question relates to. Making the data available so that everyone comes kind of close to the same answer. I don't know if that's a data mark or some kind of public forum so that. You know, I'm, you know, I asked Julia for, you know, what's an enrollment number, and I get asked, and I ask Henry, and it's asked, you know. I, so I think it's important, right? Data, this can be very difficult to understand correctly, right? So I'm curious, like, is there, are we trying to create? Like a data mark that we can say, this is where we're pulling data from, and this is why we're doing that. And so please use the status, you're doing your, you know, if you want to do your own self-analysis or something like.
Yeah, and I think the answer to that is it depends on what, when you're looking at it. So like to Melissa's point, you know, the greater number doesn't include those, those, those. Other services. Um, do we pause on, say, this is the actual kids that have, you know, bodies in seats? That's one discussion. Why do we have these other kids? Something, that's another discussion. But in totality, this is the number, so it's clearly responsible. So maybe, maybe, maybe enrollment's not. I mean, it's, it's, who, how many students are responsible in, in all public schools? It's a two thousand five hundred thirteen kids, Carl. How many kids have their rear ends in seats? Two hundred and seven less than that. That's a number. Um, so, yeah, so there's that, you know, so I think it depended on what the conversation is, but. There's different ways to pull that, right? You know, you know, I, I found this. You know, this isn't, this is not, this isn't a current thing, I mean, I, I found that. Generally, media will look at the D E S I numbers and make extrapolations from that. That's really not a good way to do it, because the numbers are never, they're always. Uh, so that's important to know. I know these are. That's important to know. Uh, I would rather say, someone said, here's what I saw, S E numbers, if I'm looking at that. You tell me like where we are currently. That's a much better conversation to have and. Easy to get that access. They will make discussions to. Get those questions out of the US, the right way to get the right.
If I could, to Al's point, I think even outside of enrollment, there's a broader conversation we can have over how much. District data, you know, how it's being publicized, because for us to have these conversations around. M C S performance or enrollment or whatever the topic is, making sure that we're all. Be the, the community as a whole, starting from the same place, you will make those discussions.
No, yeah, so I think having these discussions at this, this, this level in terms of what we're looking for is really helpful. So I think you say, hey, give me, you know, I want, we want them to have that, well. Okay, but this, this story is to be told about that, you know, and not to go down that rabbit hole, but. This year's M C S P is a major, more vastly different, because now that it's not a graduation requirement, I tell you straight out that the numbers are much different. Straight, so. You know, those are the, those, that's the part of the situation.
All right, um. Mike, you're the next up. Uh, for an update, please.
Fun, thank you. Um, so I was asked to provide F Y twenty five fiscal update, and I did for something in the packet. Uh, it has changed already, but I think we are getting much closer with the town to. Finalizing fiscal year twenty five numbers. Uh, this afternoon, I got some. Wait, awaited news, as, as I mentioned in my mental, we were waiting for some transfers to come through. And they had reclassed some of our, reclassified some of our expenses. That we had spent out of our local budget. The town had some upper money they needed to spend, so they looked at some of our expenses that they could justify, seem awful money for. So I'll give you a little bit of the, the update. Um, it, it looks like. And I feel pretty confident with these numbers, much better than I did when I, when I wrote this report. Uh, it looks like we are going to, as a, as a school department, return about two hundred and forty thousand dollars, two hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars. To the town out of our L E A budget. Uh, today they transferred or did reclassification of another two hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and twenty two dollars. So all total. It will look like the school department turned four hundred and fifty, four thousand dollars to the town. For fiscal year twenty five. I could pause it for a moment, cause I know that's the information you didn't have coming into this evening. All right, good. Uh, so just the highlights from fiscal year twenty five. So our salaries were budgeted at thirty eight point five million dollars. Of which we expended approximately thirty six million, leaving a surplus of about two point five million dollars of unexpended salary funds. Uh, primarily, this can be attributed to vacancies in our, um, positions early in the school year last year. Most of you recall, had a lot of vacant positions when we first started last year, and, uh, went a much better place this year. But those vacancies, uh, provided part of that. The other part of it is that we had some special education positions that we could not fill last year, and we had to, uh, fill them with contract service providers. And, uh, when we pay a contract service provider, I can't take it out of a salary line, I have to take it out of a contracted services line. We did not do budget transfers last year. That'll be a, a whole of mine this year is that we do budget transfers throughout the year, so we can kind of align. Um, and, and I certainly don't wanna shirk anything, but. This wasn't our budget last year. We were working with the previous administration's budget. We had rebuilt the entire thing. It was probably. Rebuilt so we could understand it. Not, not that they did anything wrong, but we didn't, we need to understand in our own terms. So. Um, it was probably late in the calendar year before we actually had, uh, a budget that was, uh, something that we could digest and understand. Uh, and then at that point, we were into the new, the new budget cycle, and that was a whole new process for all of us. So we spent a lot of time. Uh, trying to communicate, be transparent, give the accurate numbers, um, make some great estimations. And I, I hope we did a great job. We'll know at the end of this year. Um. And so it's kind of the salary. When we get into contracted services, so if we were two and a half ninety dollars under budget, you can imagine we were somewhere over budget. That's primarily came in contracted services. Uh, we budgeted at two point three million and we came at three point three million in expenses. And I, I've broken that into four primary categories. First one was maintenance. Uh, I think, then in the year when we realized we were gonna have some surplus funds, some unexpended funds. We focused on some things that we could do in the district to improve our facilities. One time expenses, you know, hire staff, those are long-term expenses, recurring expenses. If you do other things, there's recurring expenses. So one time, one time expenses, we met with all our principals and said, hey, if you. You had a few dollars, what would you like to do as a portion of school? Paints and flight poles, we did some brickwork, um, replaced some doors, some windows, uh, things like that. Uh, so we were over budget in, uh, maintenance by three hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars. We were also over budget in special education with our contracted service providers, uh, by two hundred and ninety six thousand dollars. Again, we couldn't fill positions, we had to backfill with contract service providers. Kind of a, we draw a pretty clear line with those two salaries and, you know, contract service providers. Um, special education out of district transportation, um, you know, Lisa, Maria and Victoria have done phenomenal work. They spent, I think, the first six months last year trying to identify all of our kids around the district, because I don't think there was really. Uh. Documented list of those students. So we were over budget by a hundred and, uh, thirty nine thousand dollars in transportation for our district students. Uh, and then finally, you know, when, you know, when we got to town meeting, there was a little change in our capital requests. And we had already committed to, not committed at that point, but we had planned to do, we'd already cut a bid, the painting of the pack. And the reupholstery of the packed seats. And, um, we got cut back to do one or the other. Uh, because we had already committed to doing the seats, because we acquired the material and fabric, um, we put the pack painting out of our capital ask. Per request of the town. Uh, so we spent a hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars of our. Budget money, L E A, local educational agency budget money last year, last year's money to paint the pack. Uh, we started right before, it was like in the last week of June, so it covers some expense in FY twenty five. Some of it occurred in FY twenty six. So I worked that all out with, uh, Alicia. Before we got to the end of the year and said, hey, look, if I have my leftover, and I sign this contract, we'll start it in June. It's gonna carry into July. She says, as long as it starts in June, you're great. So made sure that that was gonna happen. So that was the, the majority of the contracted services. Uh, another bucket we look at is supplies. We budgeted our supplies last year at about one point three million dollars, and we expended about one point two or four million. Uh, one point, one point two four million, uh, so we're approximately sixty five thousand. Budgeting supplies. Supplies are classroom supplies, office supplies, custodial supplies, um. It's custodial. Those are probably the primary categories. There's some other smaller supply lines, uh, but those are, those are the people. The main ones out of that category. So a little bit under budget there. Um, so back to Lisa, Maria and Victoria, uh, our special education, as we said, they were trying to find out where the students were and. Get a good documentation on it. We've got a, you know, we've got a great shared document right now that we are constantly updating. Um, but our special education tuitions last year were approximately one point two four million over budget. Um, again, it wasn't our budget, it, we didn't. We're, we're gonna handle it, but it wasn't our budget to, to defend. Um, if you consider that we prepaid nine hundred thousand tuitions the year before for last year. And we took one point one million of last year's budget to prepaid this year, the net over budget was about. Just slightly over a million dollars. Uh, and then, so that's tuitions, the other items of note, um, legal expenses were three hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars over budget. That is, uh, contracted service. So if you can. Take that out of the excerpt, the, the one million that we were on contract services. Legal settlements were approximately nine thousand over budget. Natural gas was approximately fifty four thousand over budget, and on the flip side of that, electricity was two hundred and forty thousand over budget. Um, I did not have these projections when I built the FY twenty six budget. So working on basic. You know, rolling forward existing numbers, we will probably be over on electricity again this year and probably, I'm sorry, under, under budget on electricity and over budget on. Um, natural gas. Hopefully, we will not be nearly as far over budget of the expenses. Uh, so that's kind of the wrap up on FY twenty five. I gave you, uh, a list of all of the buyout expenses for the year. Uh, those are gonna change a little bit because of the two hundred and. Thirteen thousand, I believe, in reclassifications that happened today. Um, and I will, I can provide an update on this. So as we move into FY twenty six, uh, we just completed our first payroll, uh, for our ten month staff. Uh, I have to say, um. That happened last, last Thursday, the eleventh, a week ago. I, I have to give a huge shout out to our H R, HR departments, um. Lisa, Tamira, Gloria, Sam, I've done a great job recording people. Lisa, Tamira, Gloria, Sam, I've done a great job, we've worried people, made you sure that it worked, that it needed to get completed, got completed in a timely fashion. Uh, Carleen and Kristen, Carleen's our payroll supervisor and Kristen, their coordinator, and Kristen is our assistant business manager. Um, they meticulously went through every higher packet, uh, and, and it wasn't just the higher packet, we have to also have to give steps and pulling increases to all employees. They scrubbed everything. They, they did an amazing job for, um, for the amount of work that needs to happen in that short period of time. Uh, and, and I have to compare it to last year, night and day difference, just an amazing job. Um. And then also upstairs, Kathy, Carrie and Amanda, the cell. Um, they have worked with us tremendously, made sure that everything was good. I'm not saying it went perfect. We have, we had a, uh, probably less than a dozen. Uh, probably of employees who questioned their payroll. We might have missed a, a coverage block. We might have missed, uh, an hour of overtime somewhere. Uh, we might have missed a stipend. Everybody got their paycheck. It may not have been exact, exactly what they were looking for. Uh, on the plus side, we spoke with every one of those employees. We made sure that it wasn't a, a financial hardship for them. And, um. Identified that we did not have to run a supplemental payroll last week. Uh, and if anybody had, you know. They also would take away two weeks. Had, had anybody said they couldn't, we certainly would have taken care of them, uh, in, in a timely fashion. Including the, the council and weekly payment. So we could have thrown stuff on them this week if we absolutely needed to, but. Uh, it's a lot of work put in to pull in people into their payroll. So we said, we asked, brought a partner model and again, we did a great job. Amazing. Um, so. As we talk about the implementation of UNIS. Uh, there are several people in this district in the town who have used UNIS in other communities. It is. I think we were all expecting it to go a lot smoother because we don't use it before. It hasn't gone poorly. But there have been a lot of, you know, things that have delayed us, you know, A P paying bills. You know, vendors being set up because they didn't get transferred over, right? There were a lot of little quirks that delayed some things. So we have some vendors who are not. Shooting please for this right now. Um, we, we worked at the town this week to make sure that all outstanding invoices that were sent up could be paid in a very timely manner. To us and vendors who are, would prefer that to get their money in, in less than thirty days and it will over thirty days for some of our vendors right now. Not months, not three or four months, but you know, six weeks, seven weeks passed too. So, um. You know, sorry, no, we're not proud of, but we are working diligently to make sure that it's taken care of. Um. We are transitioning, so that was just A P, tax payable, general ledger, accounting. Uh, we are transitioning our payroll and our H R modules, January first of twenty twenty-six. So three more months, we've been working. Around a, a lot of full day meetings once or twice a week with our H R payroll department. So. They are very entrenched and you put that on top of trying to put a school here, tell them they, they've really bent over backwards to make this happen. Um. So they've been training and whatnot. So, uh, what I will say is, because I have to caution. Last year I started giving budget reports in December or January. Um, what's happening right now is all payrolls going through soft right and all expenses are going through, um, UNIS. It's not going to call UNIS, that's our old name, it's, oh, E R P. Um. I need the town to take the payroll expenses. Where crosswalk inhabit hit is a journal adjustment to UNIS. And they haven't, they've been, they've been focusing on getting fiscal year twenty-five closed, so they haven't made those transfers yet. And, and I don't know, once we start to do them, husband, it's going to be, and I, I don't want to commit to something. I can probably do my own crosswalks for reporting purposes, probably take me an extra day or two to hold out the reports for you, but, um, I just caution that. It may not be as smooth until we get to January or February. The reporting, I, I will give you as transparent of information as I can, it will be as far as I can, um, just, just understand that it may not be what you, you received last year. Um, so there we go on that. Just to, uh. Kind of go over what some of the things that we did this summer, our custodial meeting staff, uh, huge kudos to them. They were just amazing. Uh, on, on, you know, when, when I arrived here last time, I, there were a lot of, a lot of things wrong. Uh, the, the, know what they were doing, not what they were doing, which direction they were supposed to be going in, who they were reporting to, you know, what they should be working on during the summer. So, um, you know, Todd and I created a list, have all the custodians, maintenance guys, we said, hey, maintenance folks. Um, hey, look, this is our expectation this summer. We set the expectation, they took it as a challenge and they far exceeded my expectations. But so, uh, just to cover some of the schools at Glover, we did, uh, finalize the H V C installation. And I, and I'll caution that it's only about twenty percent of the building because that's all it was designed for. So not every classroom has H V A C, not every space has H V A C, they, they don't have, they have heat, they have ventilation, they don't have the air conditioning. Um, so levers, system really, from what I understand, never really functioned properly from the start still. Um, we had a, a, called M U P, professional chemical electro plumbing. Professional onsite the entire time or outside of the week, nothing during the, throughout the project. Uh, but one day we, and, um, you know, it was critical to have him there. He really dialed in to this contract to make sure that they were doing it. So very pleased that the Glover H V C is up. Uh, special thanks to our P T O at Glover. They donated, uh, fifty thousand dollars for new completion. Uh, I've been over there once or twice now. The kids love it. It's a little, little, uh, climbing structure, the hoops and. Very similar to the one that's at Village. And I'm not sure if this one had brown or not, but very similar to the one in Village. Um, kids love it. They were planning on it. They. I didn't know we could get so many kids on one of those structures, but they, they did a great job. Uh, so thank you to the P T L. And then, uh, I don't know if you recall, but, um, the previous town meeting, not this past one, the one before the town meeting, uh, they had. Approved some money for new surfacing playgrounds. So we were able to use that and we surfaced the, well, the playground, uh, that they, the rubberized surface there was. Um. Like a Massachusetts road, there were some, there was some pockets. Yeah, but like the plaza just come through. Uh, also Glover, we did some painting whiteboards, um, whiteboard, do, though, I don't know if you know, the, the, the walls in the hallway. At Glover are actually whiteboard painting. So you can use a white bar, a board marker on it. Um. Over, over ten or eleven years, they, they, so, uh, our, our own custodials, meeting staff took care of that. So thank you. And they also painted, uh, the stairway. Uh, there was a stairway that was just cement and it, it just looked, it was just cement. From the first floor to the second floor. It's actually a seating area. I think it's a little like staging area. Um, they, they painted it green. It's a, it's a, it's a pretty, it's a pretty, yeah, it's green, it's, uh-huh. But it, it looks a lot better than what it is. Uh, and then also we rearranged the mean office. Somebody goes in the glove and you notice that Don's desk is back where it was two years ago and, uh, flows a lot better in the office there. That's where we did most of our work.
Can I, can I just add one, uh, one, two things that go up? Sure. Um, so also for the playground, um, it's really good set of playground structure, the roof rising. Um, my, my hope is that to, uh, like to get some of the litters out of there, maybe. Dammick routine or something. And we were looking at how, well, Washington's, it's just designed for it. So like stuff gets washed out on this box and spread out. So we're going to continue to look at that. And then the other ask was, uh, there's, uh, glass cases on the first or the second floor. And I was just talking, I was out there after the P T O, we scored it, I brought it up, I'm just looking at it, seeing the glasses. You know, shattered glass or not, just because it's, you know. Yeah, so, so we're, we're looking at that. We, we have to try to determine if it's, I'm, I'm assuming that it's like, like the kind of glass, spider, not shattered, um, because it's a new building, but. Like, I, I, I'm going to explore more and more to see.
John and I were coming for a test for a moment. Uh, so moving on to Brown School, uh, Brown, yeah, very new school, so not a whole lot to do there, but, um, we did install a bottle filling station. Uh, it's a little shocking that it's in a school like that, didn't have water access for our students during lunch. So there was no bottle filling station in the Brown School in cafeteria. They had down hall, they can dump water, it just wasn't in cafeteria where the students were during lunch. Or breakfast. Um, there were some blinds and some windows that needed some repairing motors and things like that. So those were repaired. Um, if anybody knew, in the cafeteria, there was, there's a trim that goes up over the stage. And a couple of pieces of trim had become loose. Todd's team went up and had taken them down immediately to make sure that nothing fell on anybody. And so they were able to reinstall and secure them properly. They should have been, uh, installed in the first place. So. Uh, thank you to them for that. And, uh, thanks for our P T O at Brown. There is. Not sure that it's up yet. Most of there, uh, there's going to be a new netting system on the playground to keep the balls from going down the hill towards the tower. So, so there's. I think that P T O was said, either we keep buying more balls, but buy, buy a head. So I think they chose to buy the head. So thank you. Uh, veterans, uh, so as I mentioned earlier, we cut the, the path painted just huge. We got the new upholstery in the back, which is huge. It looks great. Um, we would like to, to do the runners, get copper runners in there eventually, but you know. We ran out of time and money, but, uh, that looks great. And the new, the light fixtures. Work on that also. Um, we added, uh, many split units to, uh, one of the classrooms, it's right above computer lab, right into computer lab. And the windows were not sufficient to keep the, the, that area, that area. Energy coming out of the computer system. So, uh, we had a mini split there and I think we put a mini split in the I T space. In the gymnasium, we did get some wall padding. It's been on plan for about six months. It finally happened. So the new wall padding is up in gymnasium at veterans. Um, this really was on a summer project, but I had it on there. Uh, we painted the flagpole, uh, the main flagpole. Uh, somebody continually reminded me how bad it looked. Um, so, uh, that, that, so when I went over to look at the flagpole to see how bad it was. I noticed at the front entrance, uh, all the brickwork around the front entrance, which really isn't the front, it's just full front entrance. Uh, it needed to be repointed, uh, probably in the repointed, some of the bricks need to be reset and whatnot. So, um, we got both those things. Flagpole was painted, our entryway was, um, spruced up, so that's something supposed to. Uh, at Village, you know, I, I gotta say, Village is that school that. Huge shout out to that custodial staff. They, well, well, all our staff. That custodial staff was down, she were there, there, there was a primary lead guy and person in there, um, assistant. Uh, and just Marilyn all there rock the summer. She just, she just crushed it. So with her teeth, they, they, they looked really hard. Um, and Marilyn's not the age, not the assistant, the age, she just the next, the next man up. So she, uh, she, she had to go break. Uh, but Village, when I went through Village last summer, um, you know. They, they kind of joke with me, they, somebody left a pair of white gloves on my desk. I was waiting on the issue one, one day or something. Uh, I was going around all the. What we're having so far on the doors, windows, probably, uh, projectors and with smart boards, you know, the floors look great. The walls looked okay. There were, there were areas that they weren't hitting. Uh, and then when I went to that building, these guys caught on quickly and, um, went out to, uh, Village this year. Spotless, I tell you, I could not find a speck of dark dust. I was so proud. So. Uh, thank you to them. But, uh, the only thing we really did over there this year, that was a primary project, a little, little projects, uh, primary project was put in the school board. Which was a donation from, uh. It was National Burn Bank and sports, you know, football, youth football. So, um, so thank you to them. Uh, they, they used it last week. They said fantastic. So that's great. And, and you can control it. They can probably mess with their school. But, uh, it's great. Uh, so and then, um, which is moving on to the high school. Um, during negotiations, we were up and downstairs all the time and I noticed how bad our front stairs, some of the stairway looked, uh, just shit paint and stuff. So, um. While they were painting, when they get done painting the pack, we told them, hey, can you go over and hit the stairs too? So they did that. It was, that was a contractor that we used. Um, we have made substantial progress on the fire doors. That's been the never ending project. Uh, I think everything is tied in except for one connection that we need the, the sprinkler company to come in and tie in something so that the doors actually go down. When the fire alarm is pulled. Right now, the doors go down. If the. Smoke detectors in that immediate area identify smoke in that area, they will go down. But if the whole building is set off, it doesn't go down. So, um, their fire doors. So something we're working on, um, we can put them down manually. We can put them down, get that, get that detector right there at the location. We did put a new entrance source. Unfortunately, they bought the wrong size glass for the panes above the door, the, um, skylights, what do you call, um, side lights. Transom, transom, yes. Um, so on the first day of school, they weren't in, but I understand by that Friday. They did create an stall. So they're in, please develop that. The new entrance stores are all done. That was a capital project, town meeting a couple of years ago. Um, we did install many splits, athletic director's office, food service director's office. There's the two offices that are used year round, didn't have air conditioning. So in the summertime, they got quite, um, quite warm. So. Uh, I'm almost done here. Uh, food services, we installed quick cooking equipment, warming equipment, prep materials in most of our schools. Um, I, I believe Village is going to get a home line. Who at the end of the year, I call the serving line on both sides of the Village School. So that's amazing because I think they're all, what is. Uh, a little dated, some wood tops on it, basically, we, we prefer to stay in this deal. So John, us, Tim and his team are working on that. So thank you, John, and then. To make sure our food service areas are as, as good as. Um. I already covered the custodians. Uh, so the final thing is transportation. Uh, so currently we're running four big buses. Last year we were in three big buses and too many buses. This year we're running four big buses, which is our spare. While they have a spare, which very causes me some angst, um, you know, if something goes down, four big buses, we, we don't have a backup bus. Uh, which means we have to do double runs. Fortunately, it's a small town, we can get around relatively quickly. Um, but we don't have a spare bus right now. And so we're running our four big buses. Those are, uh, those were students K to six. Who are outside of two miles, uh, provided transportation, no charge per state law and students inside of two miles are paid a ride. So, uh, maybe we were a little over ambitious on letting kids pay to ride, families pay to ride and open up their buses a little bit. So that's a concern for me. Um, but I have to tell you that. It's a, it's a needed model that parents call us consistently going, how can I get my child on the bus? I had to be here by a certain time where I can't get, I have a little one at home. I can't. You know, it's hard for me to juggle, um, and I, I feel for them. I, I understand that, um, but we are testing right now. So we've had to tell parents recently. And, um, support them at this time, you know. Gets decided, don't stick to bus. We run a, there's a seat to build a little certainty. I don't believe in sending half empty buses into school and talking to everybody. Said, sorry, we can't support you. So we'll, we'll continue to work on that. Um, and, and really great news is, uh, we purchased an electric bus, an electric van, not a bus, sorry. An electric van. It's a seven D van. It's a four transit E three fifty. It holds approximately ten or twelve passengers. We are primarily going to use that for special education transportation in the morning and the afternoon. Um, when we get out of school, uh, but we're also going to be able to use that. Some of our special education groups that need to go to the supermarket during the day. Do maybe some jungle coaching during the day or small field trips. Um, and then after school, some of our smaller athletic teams, maybe like the golf team, um, you know. Teams that don't have thirty or forty players, uh, will be able to use that. And. Uh, what a seven D vehicle is, is it's, it's a regular vehicle. But it's got flashing lights on it. It's got this, you know, um, safety equipment's on board, fire extinguisher, everything that's required will be on the bus. It has on it, but it's a smaller vehicle. If we use it on a fixture, any in the morning, the afternoon, picking up and dropping off students at their homes, it required to have a seven D license. Not hard to get, but that's something that anybody has unless they have a plan to drive a seven D vehicle. Uh, outside of that normal schedule, anybody can drive it. Sorry, athletic coaches, as long as they have valid driver's license, um, proof of insurance. They could drive them if they choose. Never tell them if they have to drive it, but if they said, hey, we really need to get to this match. Earlier today, I think it's six kids ago and, you know, certainly. Say, hey, here's the keys to the van, if you're comfortable driving it, let me see your license, let's get a photo of it. But, um, everything, you know, up and up and up, but, um, on non. Driving trips, um, anybody can drive that. So that is my recap of twenty-five and summer of twenty-six.
I got a thing you might, or, and you would have the custodial and maintenance staff, well, this work I got to do this from them. So we're so committed, but. The kids, I, I think it makes such an impact on their school day and talking about what would change your school, like at least half the things on. About the facilities, one of, one or family or something. So it, it really has a huge impact and I, they did a great job. So thank you.
He, this, this fall's chance is going to be leaves. You know, and I know we partner, we partner with Parker Rock, but when I walk into a building in December and I still, still see the leaves, like. Then a boat, they, they were cleared away, but they blew back again. I, I, I'm gonna leave. Now, now my focus is going to be on leaves now. So, um. You know, the foliage leaves, yeah.
Look out for leaves. Alright, um. Might be also the next item we're on.
I just had a couple of comments, I guess.
That's right.
Did you have any comment about the budget? Apparently not. Um, so thank you for the update. Um. We, I, there will be, I guess, a budget supplement at some point, but. I am one person, I would like to see the current budget reported as similar. I don't know whether that possible it is. We still always get that monthly, even if we get it quarterly, it would be my request. But budget, you know, budgeted, spent and covered. Showing us, you know, on the major line items. Um, I think the other thing too is that we really do, I mean, we are legally responsible to vote the transfers. So. You know, we didn't do it last year, but I think we need to make sure we do.
Yeah, we. Appreciate you.
And do we, I don't. And do we, I don't know if we voted the, or maybe we did vote the prepayment.
Yeah, my my memories will foggy on that one. And then we talked about it. We talked about at least matching the prepayment from the year before nine hundred thousand. Um, and so we went to one point one nine.
Okay, well, let's make sure.
So, yeah, the one point one nine. I don't believe we voted the one point one nine.
Well, that's, that's important, but also I think we have to vote the surplus. Goes back, do we not? Or maybe I I used to do it. I don't know if we have to.
Do you think the town will take it?
No, I think the town will take it. Um, but I do think that it's. Required to do that.
Yeah, and I think, I think, and I, I think it's good to be transparent about it, to let everybody know that, you know, we were officially responsible. We, you know, I'm sure we could have found a way to spend a lot of four hundred thousand dollars, but we thought it was, you know. We did, we we've got our pack taken care of. We've got a lot of projects taken care of, making sure that, you know, we're officially responsible and return some money to the town.
To free cash. I mean, that goes right, goes right to free cash.
That's outside of my area. Yeah, that's.
All good news.
I did actually have a question. Um. We came in. You know. Several million, a couple million dollars under our salary last year. And I. But the best of my recollection, we're now in pattern of like, we've had a couple of years where we've had. Budgets or buses that have been attributed to unfilled positions. And I know you haven't been here and it's not your budgets, but. I would like to better understand. Those unfilled positions, you know, are are they similar, same positions, either sitting open or, you know, returning employees through them? Um, just to better understand. How this is happening.
I think the simple answers we always look at, you know, if like last year, there was a lot of unfilled candidates, whatever, we need that. Like a good chunk of them. So that money didn't, that doesn't mean that we didn't fill them at all. It just means that it took a while to fill them. And then we always look at, um. There is open positions. Do we need to fill them? And if not, that's that's part of nutrition, right? It's real good at that. Um, right now, we only have so many hours of swap. They just hire a special educator for the high school. So there's more there. More than he had to, um. The uh, well, where else I are, there. So this is just the two, the two that definitely we have open at this point. So one or two, I it's just. Like we gave some weird group that require staff. So I feel, but I feel bad about that. I don't have. Folks fall around the heart of it. So I think that that was a be much easier to track um at this point. Say this will be that budget, this will be the middle, and we all look at where do we break me. Um, you know, it's a few times it's been eight thousand last year. Uh, yeah, well, let me.
Yeah, and I I'll say within my budget, um, is beginning to bite at some committee for. Be able to sit this more clearly. Ah every person is is listed with their step, their call, and their salary. And that's how we built the budget. There are only two lines in the budget that do not directly tie to a person. One is lane changes. Um, step changes, lane changes, so much step, but lane changes are people who um go for fifty credits or thirty credits or forty five credits or sixty credits. Um, we usually don't know that exact number when we build the budget. So ah there's a, there's a line item in there for for lane changes. And the other one is retirements, because we don't always know retirements, but we know there's gonna be a saving. So lane changes increases our budget. Um, that's a, that's an add to our budget. And retirements is a decrease on our budget. So there are two lines on the budget that don't directly tie to an individual. And and those are the two lines. And they're relatively small, I mean, that's a one thousand dollars. So. It's not, it's not, but you'll, you'll see that as we we get to the budget process and.
If that's what you're describing, then we should be shooting for more accuracy on the salaries line, probably moving forward, right?
Um, I think we are, I feel very comfortable. Yeah, I can see now. When the budget was filled for twenty five, I can't say I did not build that budget. And and I rebuilt the best I could. And and I and I found some pockets of money and I scratched my head and I said. You know, was that, was that for lane changes? Was that for retirements? Was that for for something else? You know, I couldn't tie it up and um. You know. We need to afford it. There was a lot went on last fall when I was trying to rebuild the budget. There was.
Yeah, there's, there's gonna be some outliers, that's right. But I I I think Melissa's getting to it, like. There probably is some pattern, right, of retirement, some pattern of turnover. And do you take that into account in the forecasting?
We do, yes, so for one hundred percent.
In the budget, in the budget.
It's hard, it's hard to do patterns in retirement.
No, you could, you could say it's, you know. Some about, maybe, you know, some of your couple of.
Fifteen, yeah.
But.
And we're just like missing in every direction by that amount of a number, just like. People, well, I wonder why you ask for that much money if you don't.
I can tell you about that. Yeah.
I think there's two things, though, that I will start in September. We will hear this till June. Or May, we have a meeting, staff about village report that Vanessa, that of course, this is my seventh year. Um, to get to be to account for every single position, we budget. Yeah, so I'm sorry, I take it back. Count for every position that's in every level. So what's your case load, what's the class load, counting those down. And then the other thing is a zero based budget. So what we tend to do is we roll over every year. So or we, what we've done in the past is, this is what the village school budget was last year, this year, including contractual. A zero based budget processes. Go away and say, okay, how many students do you have in village school? How many people? And you vote it. And that has also been. Since I've been, which it's a lot of work. And I know that's hard to do, and but there might get used, but at least it is pass formation. Because that would give you. Not only accuracy in which you add, you know, in which you have, but accuracy in what you.
So ah lane changes in this current year budget is budgeted at ah two hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. And retirements are budgeted as a negative hundred eighty one thousand dollars. So they almost balance each other off. Ah between retirements and lane changes. So this is all you have, you have savings from retirement. Yeah, you do, but. You also have people who are continuing their education in becoming more, ah getting more professional development, I think, that costs us.
You only have, you only have ah savings from retirements if you're not, if you're able to hire a former staff. I mean, there's. You know, real language, you know, special ed, there's some really difficult positions to fill where you don't always gain, gain that, you know, um. Some, you know, you have top step second grade teacher. It's, it's probably a little bit easier to get a second grade teacher in this year, you know, while I have a trained special educator. So. And I think ah, yeah, what we, we always look at that, so we have a nutrition we get. You know, how we, how we can manage their numbers and, you know, realistically, um, I felt good. Where Mike is right now in his process from where we were when we started, I mean, I feel much better. And I think, you know, when we have a budget conversations, everybody's budget is open or not, whatever. And I think even if you do not as early as budget, it's still a starting point. Then you adjust it from there. So those are the conversations we have. I have to be comfortable with that. Like as well as budget as well. So. You know, I I just, I just feel like, feel like my guys have been handling where I think it's always been to have a lot of conversations with services, a lot of conversation with John Constantino and the other directors, well. Efficient seats and all. We're beginning to look to kind of hold some stuff.
And I think we should know that lane changes are a good thing, right?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, you know, that we want, yeah, we want. Let have everybody have a lane. Yeah, it's really great thing for. First, yeah, obviously for our.
I think on the, on the common of um zero based budget, I think MUNIS is gonna help us. I don't know if we're gonna get to a zero based budget, at least not this year. Um, but it's gonna help us get. To what a zero based budget looks like. MUNIS will allow us to take the contracted services line for IT. I'll just get at it. Within MUNIS, I'll be able to put Dell computers or HP computers or whatever. In an amount. So we know exactly every line, how much we're spending with everyone. May not be with a vendor, but it may be for um, you know, our assmen. You know, there's a cost to ask. We'll be able to line everything up so that people will be able to see action where we're spending that IT money. Um, and things like that. So that's, I've had that experience with. Tactile technology systems, a company that thinks MUNIS, they have another product very similar called um inhibitions. And we did that inhibitions ah in my last district. We were in every, every, every. Budget leader for their department will line that in the note. Julia will sit here and go, okay, Mike, this is what we're spending on math curriculum. This is what we're spending on social studies curriculum. This is what we're spending on the English curriculum. Well, this is the PD. I mean, here the PD that we're gonna actually go for. So it'll be a lot more transparent. I can be able to see where where dollars are being spent. I don't know if it's. Zero based budget, you're not getting, you throw the whole budget out, you start all over. I'm not sure, you know. You talk about principals, other than class sizes and and staffing. Principals only have three budget lines. They've got a supply line, but two supply lines. One's for their office, which is only a couple of thousand dollars. And one is for their students, their classrooms, their teachers. Ah, and then they have a professional development buying. Other than that, everything else is salary building up. So there's not a lot. To, you know. I mean, unless you want, unless you want to line up prions and 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 that's what something that would not be, you know. I don't, we could say every teacher gets five hundred dollars for their classroom supplies at at grades one to three. And every teacher grades four to six get four hundred dollars, whatever, whatever the number is. But we can, we can work in some, some variables and some um. Some calculations to bring some equity and make sure that that it aligns with the enrollment of the schools. I'm done.
Right, um. You're almost up. Uh disposition of audio meters.
Ah, yes. So um Megan Calpren, who is our. Sorry, I gotta bring up the, yeah, I gotta bring up the metal. Ah, our beat nurse ah identified that there are audiometers. In our school buildings that were from the nineteen nineties. They were replaced last year. She said, what do I do with them? I said, well. School can use it to declare a surplus before we can do anything. Um, she did tell me that she found them on eBay for like fifty or sixty dollars. And if they're still on eBay, then they're probably not getting fifty or sixty dollars for them. But once we declare them surplus, they could put them on the state's list that any, but any other. Agency in the state can get them from us for free. Anybody wants them. Ah, and then we can ah either. Try and sell them on eBay, which we might get for these eight of them. If we got four hundred dollars, I think I'd be shocked. Um, or we, we could send it to an uh electronics company to just get them on, take them on our hands, so they're. Responsibly disposed of. Ah, but there are eight of them. Ah, some schools have like two or three. And I think that's probably because we have closed schools and, you know, things have just migrated into the land of the village. So. No, I don't know. There are eight of them. They would like to explain surplus and that they need to post.
Yeah, so this is a voting items, we need a motion to declare, see, etc. Audiometers.
I I I could have said, I don't.
As surplus.
Been forty years since I saw it.
Okay, uh, is a discussion. More like to say one more time.
Thank you.
Um.
Sorry.
I think, I think, yeah. Uh, Melissa. In favor or not?
In favor.
Thank you.
Start with the newbie.
Yeah. Uh, Henry. Al in favor, the motion passes four zero. Okay, um, back to our superintendent, uh, update on anti discrimination committee.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, keep with another PowerPoint for me, Frank, please. As Frank's getting up, uh, the committee has asked for me to do a um. Update on the anti discrimination. I think, I think I left the door locked. Not you have to go upstairs. Um. I'll, I'll, I'm gonna start. Yes. Anyway, so anti discrimination committee update. Ah, we had a meeting on September eighteenth. That was our first meeting of the year. Um, I'm, I'm pretty happy with the way the meeting went. I think ah. You know, I was rejuvenated by the conversation that the school committee had in regard to um, you know, making sure that we have some deliverable, making sure that, you know, it's kind of the forefront of everything. And not that it wasn't, you know, just, you know, again, lots of stuff going on, trying to get the committee going. Ah, we had members, we adding excitement. Um, it just, you know, like the year just kind of, kind of not squatted up, it kind of went along. And. I don't feel like we ended the school year with the committee where we wanted it to be anyway. So this was actually good. So we. Had this uh same members of the committee all of, all decided they want to come back, continue the work, which is great. Um, the first slide, can you move next slide for me, please? Um, it's just, you know, kind of agenda. So it's very basic. I want everybody back. Uh, review meeting norms, make sure everyone, and I'll make sure that we're all active listeners and that we respect everybody's viewpoints. Um, which I find is very important to do, you know, even if it helps, especially about children and kids, but. Don't sometimes be that reminder. Um, then we started talking about how we can define some plan for the school year. And then we ended with kind of reviewing some resources. So that was the overall agenda. Uh, next slide, please, Frank. Um, so part of the conversation was, you know, where should we start? This is always, this is always the trouble. So these kind of committees, it's like. You know, there's members of the community are very passionate and um about certain. Thing or areas that they want to see. Um, and I think the conversation is very lively and very um productive because. Uh, we talked about, you know, what groups. Um, administrators, we're gonna educators, we're gonna students and caregivers, parents, community members. Uh, how do we, how do we provide some? Some, you know, uh, some speakers or some, you know, uh, conversations. Around anti discrimination generally. And the fact is, a lot of times it isn't. We end up talking a lot about antisemitism, because that's honestly um something we have to address ah. Here in Marblehead and also globally. So I have a conversation um. Kind of focused on, on that. Um, and we said that we're gonna kind of have that as, as one remain folk I, but also to make sure that we're also talking about. Racism, we're talking about xenophobia, we're talking about LGBTQ plus, um, and making sure that those are all part of the discussion. So. Um, I think there was some good balanced discussion in the meeting around that. Uh, we talked about, you know. Antisemitism is number one issue and racism is number two. And then we said, well, we're not gonna put numbers on those things. We're gonna, we're gonna address all of them. And and you know, whatever's in the forefront, we can address differently or more um. You know, more in a forward way. So it was good, good conversation. So I thought that was great. Um, and then if you can put the next, the next slide. So we determined out of, out of, out of the team, where would we focus first? Um, so we decided, uh, meeting the administrative team first. Um. Uh, we had a presentation from Dr. Mary Bar Halfburn um to school committee. It wasn't. You know, the audio wasn't great, so we didn't hear like everything that she was saying, but she has, she had a pretty good message around um. Anti discrimination, obviously, um, this part of her tilt is towards antisemitism. Um, and that's okay, and that's fine. So I'm actually, I was supposed to be with her, say, I was supposed to be with her yesterday. She was on a plane. We're actually meeting tomorrow. So I had put in here where we're meeting on Wednesday, we're actually meeting tomorrow. So tomorrow morning, I'm gonna do a Zoom meeting with her. And the conversation is about how she can bring some of her thoughts, ideas around um. Uh, how we can address, um, you know, hatred and discrimination in the school setting at the administrative level. So that, you know, we can kind of push that down, um, to the educators and with students as an initial thought. Um. So I'm gonna have that conversation with tomorrow, get a better handle on what she'll bring to the mix, uh, what that will look like. Uh, my thought is likely we have the meet as all administrative team um. One place, so I possibly at a next meeting, if 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 her scandal lines up and it makes sense, I'll bring her into that forum. Um, and we'll have, you know, an hour, hour and a half discussion around um some of the things that she thinks might be helpful to Marblehead. Um, and again, not solely antisemitism, but definitely a large part of that. Um, so that's, that's one, one deliverable that they're working on. Then I think um. Uh, we also talked about other presentations um in discussions around, you know, what that will look like. We talked about utilizing some of the local resources, the foundation, ADL, et cetera, around um what kind of programming do they have? So we get to educators and students and parents, um, what makes sense. At what level does it make sense? And what form is it? An in-school assembly for the students during the day? Is it an evening, you know, assembly, a presentation for the parents? That would be a Zoom meeting. So those are the, those are the conversations we're already having. So we can kind of meter out. Um, administrators, likely um educators, students, parents, maybe in that order, still figuring that, that, that part out. But how do we, how do we leverage some of the uh, some of the local resources? And part of that will also be, you know, what is, what have other school districts done in the realm of anti discrimination? What's been helpful? A lot of it is how do we vet, you know, um, presenters, what do they look like, and what they make to the mix. Similarly, similarly, like we were talking about, I'm bringing folks to talk about substance abuse alcohol. You know, we had talked about my hearing committee, um, you know, who we bring in, it's very impactful. In a way that's helpful. Um, knowing that in the realm of anti discrimination, um, some people like seeing. Seeing or heard as being a little bit divisive. And we talked a lot about that. Um. And I think the answer was that we have to live sometimes in our uncomfortability to be able to move forward. And have those discussions and real, and let people speak their truth and hear the truth. And and accept and have conversations that might be hard. And. You know, that's a great way to frame it. That was framed by members of the group. And I think um when we move forward. Yeah, what we bring in, just having some people say, I I don't agree with bringing that person or people in. Uh, but we're gonna look, do the best we can to make sure that whoever we're bringing in speaks. Uh, but we're gonna look, do the best we can to make sure that whoever we're bringing in speaks to the greater anti discrimination piece. Um, and a couple of strategies, ways we can really comment a, a speech and. Everything. In addition to what we're doing in the anti discrimination, I mean, we're having those ongoing discussions with administrators, we're having those ongoing discussions. Through the administrators, to the educators, and, and how do we, how do we make sure that we have reporting mechanisms based for, um. Anything discriminating, discrimination, harassment, bullying, and what are those all reporting mechanisms look like and how do they use? So we talked a little bit about that in the committee as well, and, um. Asia Johnson, who sits on the committee, had some really good ideas about maybe, um, coming up with ways for, especially at the high school where, um. You know, there's mark codes, but they can, some reporting of the, you know, harassment discrimination, um. You know, I kind of hate speech and stuff, so that we have, we can capture that, and it can, you know, be anonymous, um, to give us data, but it's better when it's anonymous, we can actually address it. Um, so we talked about that. What does that look like? How, how will we collect the data? What will we do with data? Um. Who manages that data? So that's an all conversation. So it's great, we can all say, we have to do this, 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 and this, but then it's, how do we actually? Add the, um, systems in place. So we have reporting mechanisms here from the, you know, classroom teachers, the administrators, so how to track that, that's great. But, um, I don't think we have any specific or to enhance, what we have in regards to how students actually self-report. Things go on, so that's a big piece. So we, we had a lot of conversation about that, so. Be a little, okay. And then, you know, the next, thank you. So, um, special mission on combating antisemitism, I think, um. At least some of us, not all, just run that, that, um, call, and, um, we talked about this in the committee, and I think. There was a lot, we didn't get it, we didn't get to get into a whole huge, um, deep, deep discussion, but we had, we had sat at the A D L, um. Julia, uh, Pete and I went, um, Michelle Carlson and. Christine Chikowski went, um, and, and heard from, uh, Rick Barmini about the special commission on combating antisemitism and what the K D. Twelve recommendations were from that committee to Destiny. So there's conversations happening at the state level, which is great, and then the local levels, which is better. Um, and part of those conversations are the recommendations, and you guys, you guys all have the touch made patients, so you can go through it. Those recommendations are from, uh, their committee to Destiny, and we're hoping that Destiny's gonna do something with it that will be more helpful to us. But we're also not gonna wait for Destiny's stuff, because we know how that goes. So I said this in the meeting, I said, sometimes Destiny will take the information, say, it's a local decision, I've added. And sometimes they'll create a mandate for us or mandates for us, and. This wasn't taking that more, but I said, they end up being unfunded. Uh, that's, that's what Destiny does, and I, that's been my experience last thirty years, so. Um, we'll have to see how they fall, but in the meantime, we started kind of going through, and we identified at least three areas that we thought were, um. Maybe a way to focus in this committee work. Um, that doesn't mean we're gonna look at all the other areas. These are the, these are the highlighted ones that we started talking. So, uh, there's a bunch of different ones with this one. Uh, the first one was measures to increase awareness and understanding of antisemitism and broader appreciation of Jewish American heritage. And specifically under that was D, and I paraphrase this a little bit, anti biased education for school committees. And all K D twelve faculty and administrators who's antisemitism aligned with Destiny's developed framework. So. Again, Destiny hasn't developed the framework yet, but hopefully they will, but in the meantime, I think we need to look at ways to make sure that we're having the anti biased education, um. For everybody, so we can, so we can start moving in that way. Uh, next slide, please. Um, the next area was also under the first one, but again, measures to increase awareness and understanding. Um, we looked at E, which is schools and districts should work with community organizations to create and implement programming for Jewish American heritage month, which may. Treat the J H M in equivalent fashion to a history identity inherent. But that's, I think that's great. I think that's, that's a good way to kind of really integrate. Um, the Jewish heritage, American, American heritage into stuff that we're already doing. Uh, or what we're doing and how do we enhance it so that everyone can kind of understand it similar to, you know. Um, expanded heritage much, we, we do things, and we started. So we started talking about different heritage months in addition to this, and what does that look like? What are we doing currently? What can we do better? Can we do more? Um, so those are in-depth discussions that, you know, we're not gonna solve in an hour, an hour and a half, um, committee meeting. But the good conversation happens, the people sit at the table and bring them back, you know, um, the administrators at the table, bring back to the, to their folks, and we, we have those. Figure discussions. And then the third one. Uh, talked about was, uh, was under number two, which is measures to improve safety and security for Jewish communities. Um, and specifically B, which is school council department should, um. First, work to deepen their understanding of the effects of antisemitism on the mental health of Jewish young people. Uh, and apply trauma-informed interventions to incidents of antisemitism. And expand access to mental health resources for Jewish students targeted by antisemitic harassment or bullying. So I think it's great to focus on the, on the, on the Jewish students and, and how, how we need to, um, address. Um, all these areas to the school counseling. It's similar to what, you know, we, we do, but we need to make sure that we ensure that we're doing it for the Jewish students. Um, specifically when there's, you know, obviously, uh, things around antisemitism, but similarly, we would do the same thing for, you know, when there's, you know, racist. Of a G T Q plus, et cetera. Um, we take the same approach. This is, you know, this is specific to the commission combating antisemitism. But it's a good model to make sure that we're, um, that we're following for all forms of information. So I just wanna, I just wanna make sure, I wanna understand if we're talking well. Um, all the sense. And then some of the other actions we talked about was, uh, we're gonna meet with students, I have to set up the, uh. Uh, magic box, the doctor process, so I can get in and talk to the kids. I did that last year a couple of times. It was phenomenal, and they have great insight. Um, but I have to, I forget that swear to away, uh. The po, oh, we talked about policy subcommittee reviewing the anti discrimination policy at some point to recommend adding language to the system against antisemitism. So I think that's, that's a good place to start, because we have the bullying harassment policy that's been updated and everything, and that's really kind of an actual. Or anything that's bullying, harassment, discrimination, but we have an anti discrimination policy that's kind of a separate add-on to. And I think that's a good place to start, maybe adding some of that, some of that language, and then where to go from there. So that, that was the initial conversation, that was great. Um, and we talked about speakers presentations for educators and students and caregivers. Um, in regarding anti discrimination, we didn't, we didn't really talk about this too much in, in, in this meeting, but just I want to share, excuse me, share. Um, I work with Dr. Darnice, Darnice Armoni Jackson, um, she runs, uh, it's called Disruptive Education Equity Project, it's called D V. Um, and we're working with her and her company, her agency, to do a, an equity audit of the district, and what, and we'll talk more about that, and, uh, so. We had all initial conversations, then she decided to have a baby, so we have to wait her, I have to have them to turn immediately. Um, and then, and then we'll, I'll get into a, a deeper conversation about what that looks like, but I think it'll give us really good information. About practices. Our practices in district along, like every year, from hiring practices to counseling to, you know, reporting to, you know, athletics, everything. Kind of, it's gotta be a catch-all, so I think, um, those conversations and know in that deeper dive, that. For that, um, into that equity piece will be good, because it's gonna really give us good ideas about how we're addressing, um. Inspiration and things going. Uh, and then we're gonna continue research area, certain presentation workshops regarding anti discrimination, and again, partnering with community resources, A D L, F N, J C C. Et cetera. It's quite a good, you know, you know, as we look around, uh, you know. The community here has been like wonderful, like, like I get emails. I can't even, I can't honestly can't get track of like all the resources people are sending me a- around lots, right? So trying to sift through it and. You know, not even more shorts. I, it's, I've been here a year, but a year of academics, they're not, it's okay, people straight, so I'm trying my best, um. But it's been great. It's, it's almost, it's almost too much information, it's hard to sift through, but I'd rather have more than not, so. I feel good about where the committee is, I feel good direction going in. I feel good, um. You know, how we move forward after the meeting, you know, ask for the members who's been, been a little bit full on us, and how you're feeling. So now when they happen, you want to do things faster, I said, that's okay. Now what, we're, we're ready to go fast, and there's some of this. Someone's work has to take some time, like we're, we're having conversations, we're coming up with some. Some specific deliverables for our timelines, but that's, I think, I think we're. Let's try to base it on you. In those, so. That's my, I have any answering questions, thoughts, comments, ideas?
Thanks, several. Um, just a couple of questions. Um, one thing that was loud and clear from some of the folks that are on the task force. And you, I think, sort of touched on it, but it was this idea of really trying to strengthen our. Procedure for reporting and the, and that process, because I've heard of multiple staff members that are, um. Unclear on really what they're supposed to do when they see this here. Students, we're between adults or whatever, so.
That, I, that's, yeah.
Touched on it, but I didn't, you know, necessarily.
I, I find that a little odd, but I mean, that's, that's fine. Uh, it's either one of two things, um. I'm not sure why it would be that unclear. I mean, we talked about, see, something, say something, we talked about, here's, here's how we do it, but we can certainly continue to make sure that the. The administrators in the buildings are being more clear. We, we talked about this in our admin, our all admin meeting, we talked about, we have our safety committee. Uh, off the lineup, we'll talk about it there again. Um, so, yeah, the more we talk about the better, um, so we'll give you clarity, but I appreciate that, the feedback.
Um, when will we have to do? Dates. Activities.
Um, as soon as we schedule, so I'm gonna be with, uh, with you, Dr. Mary, conference tomorrow. Hopefully I'll have a date when she's coming. And then what we plan to do is, once we, once we had her come in, in, in a, had a conversation to see. We utilize her in other areas, we, we have all other people come in, will she have ideas, bottom few components, so, uh. That's, I don't know where she's available. That's, that was the first, that was the first presenting we decided on, um, discussing regularly on this specifically.
Did you talk at all about curriculum review?
We didn't get to curriculum review.
No. Do, do you expect to, or do you not?
Um, it depends. I think we do, we do curriculum, we do curriculum, we do, we do curriculum, o- oversight, um. I think there's been some conversation about curriculum, um. What we talked about was when we do the, we do the curriculum, we make sure that we have an anti biased lens doing the curriculum, so. I think that the conversations we had, I guess, conversations last year about like specifically, like is there other areas that we identify as, we have anybody? That we could look at? I think the conversations were very general. There wasn't anything that was like in this. Whatever, other than, other than, um. The one student who had identified some stuff in the high school that we, that we practiced right away, but that was identified, issues that.
But that didn't come up in the.
Because of what? So, because we're embedding that, and it's not everybody, but I think.
There's a committee that has gone through a curriculum review process. Recently, so I think that if it comes up, they'll absolutely address it, but I think it's going well, because it's an established part of our review process.
That may be, but my, in my conversations with task members, task force members, the issues around having, you know, subject matter experts. In, in terms of, um. The curriculum, I mean, that came up, right? Like we're saying, we review our curriculum, but last year we. You know, care curriculum, but yeah, so I think that was my understanding that this was something, I'm just asking if this is something in this task force. Talk about it.
Uh, we haven't this year, yeah.
Okay.
We've had one.
Okay, and then, um, at some point, would the task force come before the school committee?
Well, it could. I mean, I'm, I'm giving updates to the committee, I mean, I don't, that's not. The committee's like, so I had to look like.
I think it would be help, thinking in the spirit of transparency, it would be nice to hear from that committee. Um, at some point, maybe halfway through the year, and just have them maybe talk about it so that the community can see.
I think, I think, um, I, I mean, obviously, I'm open to whatever.
I'm one person, this, this committee may not agree.
Yeah, I'm open to whatever, whatever committee wants. I mean, I think, you know, um, I've had one meeting this school year, and I have to have another, I probably have some more information to share, and I, and I committed to. Bring it back after every committee, um, update, so. And if this committee's, you know, will to have, uh, a lot of members come in, that's fine. Um. I would say if that's gonna happen, I'd like to have a lot of the committees coming, because I'd rather not have, I want to make sure there's a representation. Part in the whole committee.
Yeah, part of your presentation was educating the, the school committee. Alright, so maybe we can combine something. I mean, I look to, you know, to just, I look to whatever you think is the most way to further this cause, right? And if it's to bring the task force here, absolutely, let's do it. Um, but, you know, I kind of, again, look to that task force to kind of help us understand what makes the most sense to help them be successful.
And I think, you know, that, and, and I mean, this isn't, this isn't a commentary, I'm, I'm calling it a committee task force, that's a really negative connotation to me, so. Anti semitic committee, I, anti discrimination committee that's working is like. I think, again, we had a really good, my estimation, and pretty much everyone I talked to from the beginning, I had a good feeling about how this meeting went. I've moved in the right direction, and I think, once I talk to Mary Halpern, um. I'll have a better idea of what she brings to the mix, and then, you know, we're gonna go from there. That's, that's the plan, that's what they call it, so. That'll, that'll, I think, first, uh.
How frequently are, are you to be?
Maybe monthly.
Monthly, I mean, so we should get an update sort of once a month.
Yeah, obviously, you know, I, you know, I can certainly share out how the, how we. Mary, our operator goes tomorrow, let's, you know, I could, I just couldn't really capitalize that, so you know. We're not waiting another month, one, one year, um. So I meet with her, and she says, yes, I can come. Whenever I can come all the day with her, and, you know, it's also possible, that's, that, that, um, probably a follow-up. I don't know which it is.
I, I wouldn't be surprised if there are funding of two weeks.
So.
All right, uh, we're launching the consent action and agenda items on our agenda. Um, again, th- this is a portion where we can combine several motions into one motion. However, that doesn't mean we can't discuss any of the items, right? That are being discussed, so, um, I will call for a motion in a second, and then we can discuss items, so warrants. So, under the consent agenda, I am looking for a motion to approve the following. The identified schedule of bills totaling five hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and three cents. The school meeting, the school committee meeting minutes of nine, four, twenty-five, September fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Also, policy updates, and I believe I need to read these, so please bear with me, um. Policy A D C tobacco products on school premises prohibited. Policy B J, school committee legislative program. Policy C V D, superintendent's contract. Policy C E, administrator councils, cabinets and committees. Policy C H, policy implementation. Policy E E A E C, student conduct on school lessons. Policy E B C D, emergency closings. Policy E C, buildings and grounds management. Policy G B E B C, gifts to and solicitations by staff. Policy G B E C, drug-free workplace policy. Policy G B J, personnel records. Policy G C J, professional teacher status. Policy J I C A, student dress code. Policy, policy J I I, student complaints and grievances. Policy J J F, student activity accounts. Policy J Q, student fees, fines and charges. Policy J R D, student photographs. Policy K E, public complaints. I'm also looking this motion to include an approval of the school committee operating protocols. The appointment of our superintendent to the North Shore Education Consortium Board. And so I'm looking for a motion in a second, please.
I won't.
Good. Um, since the policy is a big component of this, I'd like to kind of ask the policy committee to kind of briefly explain. You know, the edits and why they're part of the consent agenda, please.
So one of the things we're working on this year is going through M A S C's recommended policy changes, and these are all. Extremely minor versions that were in the shared drive or guidelines, so you can see exactly what they are, but things like punctuation, adding a legal citation. Or very minor language changes such as two team pyramid to pyramid of argument, and they do not change the meaning or.
Thank you, thanks. Um, the school committee operating protocols, we did talk about them at our retreat. Not sure if we voted on them enough, but, uh, Alicia from M A S C had recommended that. It is kind of a best business practice for school committees to approve them at the beginning of a school year, so that's why it's under consent agenda. Um, superintendent, do you want to talk a little bit about the consortium board, what that's about?
Uh, so I, I sit on the North Shore Educational Consortium Board. Um, the board is made up solely of superintendents of the districts in their quarterly consortium. And it's a annual appointment required by consortiums and, and our collaboration to appoint. Uh, the school needs to appoint their superintendents as board members. Um, so it's just, it's, uh, the, the, the D C. Um, and Alicia, so it's just, there's really no other choice other than the superintendent to be on that board. That's all.
All right, is there any further discussion on any of these items?
Um, I just had a couple of comments in the minutes, um. Uh, a couple of things, uh, one is, is it possible to pay attention to them? Uh, a couple things. Uh, one is, is it possible to pay attachment them?
Sure.
Um, and then uh, you should have the time, we should have the time in the journal.
Um. Can we have approved the draft with those changes?
Um, and also, um, we probably should have some, either like the. The logo or a letter or something. Probably the.
Like take the letterhead off the.
Or the letterhead. Um, I don't, I don't, I don't know that letterheads. Yes, they probably been something, that probably are. Um. Should be over. Because I mean, otherwise.
Right, I I guess we have to amend the motion just to include those uh, edited, I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess. Some of the assumption that wrong with those, yes, thank you, thank you, secretary.
Oh, one more thing. Um, I do, are you posting as drafts or on the website, or do you wait until we approve and then they're gonna get, and then they get posted?
I've been waiting until we approve them, but I think just because I'm hoping that we're coming fast.
Okay. Because I think if we are posting, at any point posting drafts, I think the watermark draft is there, it's really gonna be. Clear, it's great, but I think if we're not. Posting these on the website. This is not, because it's coming right up.
And you need the, you need to build a logo, check that a little way that the new uh. The right end.
Sure.
You probably should, I would use PDF. Or a document. Blank document.
For those.
With that on, and then you just copy and paste up that.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I have a sort of template that I would like to install this.
Yeah, so Julia said that too.
Oh, and one final thing, I wish you this.
That.
One.
Good, um. We'll vote on the motion. Um. All those in favor? Okay, the motion passes five. Five. Five zero. Okay, um. John, superintendent, I believe you and. Julie are gonna.
Yeah, so uh, Julie and I.
Next item on the appendix K ratification.
Yes, so um, Julie and I go with this, um. Uh, just as a background, uh, JOMC met last year to to talk about in Penex K, that was one of the two things that were initially charged, but the. Penex K, um, was discussed within that, in that, um. That group, so it's for administrators and for members of the union, they talked about. Uh, changes that need to happen. Uh, as I understand, the union has votes ratified, school, they asked the board to ratify it. And then we had to say just from Val's chair and then. Um. Union presidency, uh, to to do that. Oh yeah, no, no, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Those are the slides. That's pretty much it. Um. My example, is it one, okay, so the um. Our objective um, was outlined in the random agreement that the MBA and the school committee came to. Last November, um, and so it outlined what the JOMC's task was, um, who would be in the membership, and it gave us a pretty term deadline of March twenty-eighth. Um, to um, make recommendations for Penex K, it's all about educator evaluation. Um, so as it says here, you know, if the union ratifies it, um, then it would go before the school committee and uh. That's right. So we had the JOMC, um, so you can see we had equal representation from our unit A members, um, as well as administrators, and it was a very collaborative, it was a great group. We had. Very long meetings, a lot of great work happened, and I'm just really grateful for the collaborative effort there. Um, Katie Freegun, um, and I were the co-chairs, and we worked collaboratively to the discussions through the entire fifteen pages of Appendix K. So I just want to highlight some key updates. Um, as I just mentioned, policies, we did some of the the updated language definitions, job titles and pronouns. Um, and also streamlined and reorganized sections to really help um, make it clear between, we have two groups within the unit A in terms of evaluation process, and it's the teachers that. Um, are within their first three years of employment in Marblehead Public Schools, so they're considered non-professional teacher status. And then those who have been here for and have successful proficient um, or above uh, ratings for three years, they're professional teacher status. So we try to make similarities in those two groups. Uh, no change in the non-PTS um, for evaluations and for for teachers who have been here. Um, it would shift from one observation every two years to one observation every year, um, for no less than ten minutes. Other than that, we align the dates. Um, it was really a long overview to do this, um, and so. We came together to do that. The MBA ratified this on August twenty-fifth. Um, so it is now our recommendation, and I believe all fifteen pages were for you. And happy to answer any questions, but um, we're open um, for the.
Motion, yes, sir. Motion to ratify Penix K. Second?
Second.
Excuse, any, any further discussion? Okay, um, all in favor? All right, the motion passes five zero. Thank you. Our next item is.
Nice to make sure I have you signed before we leave tonight.
Sure. Task if you need to. So uh, Kate is going to talk about the twenty-five, twenty-six year-long agenda.
Thank you. Um, so this was in the shared guide for everyone's review. Um, just to recap, we discussed at a meeting in late August. Developing a year-long agenda to inform both the committee and the public, the direction of these work this year and the anticipated timing of certain panouts. Uh, at that meeting, we looked at examples that we had pulled from some other districts and discussed formats that were applicable to many members. Um, and Jen shared with me after that meeting the master planning calendar that has been used by the committee in the past, um, and that informed. Some of what went into this agenda. Um, so we're hoping to prove this tonight and then. Say and whatnot. It is not meant to be an exhaustive list. For a set part of best deadlines, which is sort of a gentle plan. If I said what this year.
This will make the motion to.
Yeah, I am, okay.
And we need the motion.
Right, so a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six Marblehead's many year long agenda.
Second.
Um, so a couple things, um. I uh, set school committee goals for October. Um. I think we have a meeting on the thirtieth of September. Um, I don't know whether it might be the world, I mean, we, this committee was formed June tenth. And we're setting our goals in October, it just seems like.
I was gonna discuss that just being, that will be the primary focus, September thirtieth being us setting our goals.
Um, the next thing is regarding the roof. I see you're approving the roof project in the, uh, the uh, contract in November. Um, I think there's gonna be a decision to be made in terms of the. Type of roof, is that something we're gonna, the school committee is gonna have to decide?
So uh. As I've been discussing with Left Field, RDA and Henry, um, they are going to have. The. It's all the general contract and five trades, it's not tracing. Um. Compiled and ready for a subcommittee meeting, a roof subcommittee meeting. On November fifth, I believe, or sixth, right in that timeframe. In order for us to bring it to you that, that week, that was Wednesday, Thursday night's meeting, it's Thursday afternoon, and it's Saturday night's meeting. With a recommendation uh, from the subcommittee as to which direction to go. Um.
And that's in November?
That's the first weekend of February, the first Monday of February.
So then, is that recommendation be? Or any of this with? The actual contract? Because.
Yes, so we'll have the contract, no, um. Yes. We, at at that meeting, that night, we will, the subcommittee will present their findings of. Or the recommendation on whether they should go and liquid apply for a new memory.
In the form of the contract?
In the form of a contract, so you will approve a contract one way or another that night, and then we'll go to select board. At their next available meeting to get them to approve the contract, but they don't. The select board does not vote on the type of roof. They vote on the form of the contract, that the contract.
Something came with us, we won't vote on the type of roof until we vote the contract.
But you're gonna decide which contract you want to vote, do you want to vote the contract that has the liquid applied, or if anyone vote that.
Based upon our recommendation or something.
Based on our condition, so.
Okay.
But school, that's, I I guess my fault, the select board does not get a say in type of roof, they're just. That the contract meets the form of the attorney, if the funding needed to do the project has been appropriated by a town meeting. And such, so they're just, really, it's just a, a uh. Bollality for them. You guys, you guys actually have, you guys have a decision.
Okay, the only reason I'm asked, I didn't mean to get diggers here, I thought we had two, I thought we had two iterations, we only have one iteration. I didn't know if we had to. Give direction on the type of roof and then they come, and then come back with that. It's all.
No, I believe it's on track, will be, you have, you you have both drafts, contracts, you vote on one or the other.
Okay.
Is my understanding.
I do want to suggest that we consider adding in January the Warner, any Warner articles that we may come forward with or must be voted in January. I don't know if you want to add that or not. You can consider.
It was, um, those were on the, the media.
I don't see more articles.
I think they were on into center.
Yes.
Yeah, the first item was just.
Okay, I would, I would suggest you, well, that's fine, they usually, they do a January reference. Um. Town, you might want to add town meeting to May. Um. The, the um, Q four FY twenty-six report will be in June. But some.
So still, this, you know, we've been doing, like, spend doing these monthly reports, I know, and then with the switching systems, he wasn't sure what he'd be able to do, and so. I set this up as we're getting a detailed report. A month after a quarter closed, which would be July, that's all. But we don't, we meet in July, so I had just figured into, yeah, so it would be a.
My intention is a weekly, a weekly, I'm sorry, hopefully, a monthly, a monthly update, that's what we started to do last year, once we got to December and January. My intention would be to do weekly, monthly also, um. I just, I can't, I'm I'm very concerned about committing to something, not having a single system I'm working from. I can't accomplish salaries right now, I mean, there's a lot of things I can't do until we get to January.
Yeah, that, that, that's all right. I I think maybe it should say preliminary, because you are not going to have a Q four report in June. So maybe.
Oh, talk about June.
These other ones appear to me will be actual quarterly reports, they're a month after the quarter. But that one should maybe just say preliminary. Um, and then we need to vote transfers, I suggest we put, vote transfers in June. It's just, I'm one person.
I'd like to get to a point, I'd like to get to a point eventually when we're doing transfers at every business. I think the, I consider the first meeting of the month when I get my report, I would like, if we have transfers to do that are critical, that we get them done every month, so that they're not.
Oh, well, I. I was like, well, I think if we can just put them down for June.
Should like, please.
Um, for June, so that it's on there, that we know we have to do that before the end of.
Yeah.
I'm happy to add those things, um.
That's good, like Kate said, it's, it's, we'll have the shops on the stuff, we have fun.
There's still really things we're gonna need to do this year, but. So. I don't have any of those changes.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make the motion that we accept.
Yeah, I don't know.
I'm sorry, I missed a motion that we discussed, I'm sorry, so, any further discussion? Yeah, everybody in favor? Motion passes five zero. Thank you. So I'm looking for a motion to accept a donation to the Marblehead Public Schools Glover Donation Fund. Is a cash donation?
Been a fact.
Same.
Um, hold that thought. Uh, looking for a motion to accept a cash donation in the amount of four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-three cents. From the Friends of Marblehead. This donation will purchase training and supplies from the Great Book, Books Foundation. At Glover Brown School, we are partnering with the Council on Aging to train volunteers to come into the schools and work with some of our second and third graders. During the What I Need block twice a week. Purpose of the program is to offer opportunities to empower students with high quality literature. And engaging discussions where they focus on aging.
So. Can I just ask for clarification, is this the Friends of the Marblehead Public Schools?
Yes, it's.
You should make that clearer, it's Friends of Marblehead Public Schools.
Good. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Very good, motion passes five zero. And now looking for a motion to accept a donation to the Marblehead Public Schools Glover Donation Fund, it is a cash donation in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. From the Glover School ETL for the Glover Labor. So.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes five zero. Okay, um. Our last item under our school communication discussion item section is. Uh, discussing subcommittees, uh, members and their roles, so I'm gonna ask Kate, if all this conversation.
Um, so again. Another document that was in the drive for tonight's meeting, um. With a. Largely new school committee, we thought it was important to make sure we had a commitment across the committee as to the roles and responsibilities of our subcommittees. Um, and then of the chairs of those subcommittees, so the hope is that we can vote on this, um, and that include. These more robust descriptions of the committee's all material materials. Um, so the document walks through each of our four standing subcommittees, um, as well as a group of the extra committee, and the various opening liaison roles. Uh, like I said, it outlines. What the responsibilities would be with some chair, and then it includes some information, Henry's been using. Technology to create submitting minutes, or to create our committee minutes. And so there's some instructions in there on how to use that same technology to easily create. An initial draft that was needed. I'm happy to make a motion, we adopt. Subcommittee rules. We've made it.
Well, second. Any, any discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor? And the motion passes five zero. Um, so now we. We have all our members, we're fully staffed as a school committee. Um, I just want to review where we are, because uh, we've been kind of waiting to be at the state before we fill all the remaining positions. So, under uh, the communications subcommittee, uh, Henry. Was approved uh, to be on that, and so there's an opening there, and I'll go through all of them first, just so we have a good lay of the land, and then we can discuss the specifics. Uh, on facilities. We had voted for Henry and Jen to participate on that subcommittee. Uh, likewise in policy, uh, for Kate and Jen to be on that subcommittee. Um. On the budget committee, um, Jen expressed interest, I'm not sure we voted for that, um, so. Um. I'll ask Jen in a minute if you still want interest there, uh, so there will at least be one opening. Uh, and then we have an opening on our, one of our liaison positions for the health and wellness team. So I guess I'll first ask this. And then I'll have an advisory.
I was on the master plan, but. Change that. And you didn't have the SAC on there. We have done the first.
Yeah, I didn't put, I, I, yeah, I didn't put the uh, school advisory subgroups, but we can, we can definitely discuss that. So. So Jen, you're kind of, you you're not interested in the town master or planning position?
I am happy to do it, but if someone else wants to do it, I'll be with that too. They have already said stuff, I think they've got a meeting already. I don't know, they're getting stuff on it. But I don't. Certainly. Somebody else wants to do it.
Okay, um. And your interest in the budget? We continue to. Okay. Is that, um, will that be your third committee? Are you okay with that?
Yeah, as long as I'm not doing the master.
Okay. Okay, um. All right, I guess we can just take these individually, I like to motion, I'll make a motion uh, to appoint Jen. To the budget subcommittee.
And do we have anybody else?
I was gonna, I was gonna ask for nominations after that, but.
Oh.
Do you have, oh, so. All in favor? Okay, that motion passes five to zero. Um. I'll stick with that same committee, do we have any, anybody who's interested?
I'll nominate Melissa.
Okay, uh, any discussion on that? Uh, all in favor? And that motion passes five zero. Okay, that motion passes five zero. So in terms of our subcommittees, that leaves the communication position, I believe, is the last remaining one. Um.
I'd love to do that.
Okay, um. I'm only hesitating. Because I'm I'm none of them, which I don't. I don't know if I should be ecstatic or feel that there's an obligation and I shouldn't be on something. So that's what I'm, that's what I'm kind of going back and forth on.
I think it could be valuable to have. Someone straddling budget and communications to be. Whatever happens with the budget this year. Um. And I don't know what Jen's feelings are.
I'm happy to step up policy.
Yeah, Jen, the concern I had there is that. Kate is the vice chair that I kind of, you know, I I had run into a forum problem and it's just Kate and I want to have discussions around designing the next meeting. So that's why I'm not, you know, I wouldn't, as much as I like policy, I'm not, I wouldn't be interested because of that reason.
I don't think that would be.
All right, so um. I I like the connections you make, Kate. So I'll make the motion that we have Melissa. Be on the our communication subcommittee. All second. Okay, all in favor? All right, the motion passes five zero. All right, so I I guess we have um the health and wellness, the town master plan. Who was that? Uh, Henry, you mentioned superintendent?
Oh, it's just the health and wellness was listed.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I'm happy to do the health and wellness. There is a positive component to what they're doing, so.
I'd be kidding. I thought those were the reasons. All right, I'd like to make a motion for Kate to be our liaison on the health and wellness team. Second. All in favor? The town best or planning position? Uh, can I entertain a nomination, please?
You want, you're gonna do it?
All right, all. That's pretty gone of technicality. I wasn't seconded. Uh, all those in favor? All right, the motion passes. Five zero. Okay, so I think we have all our positions filled.
Before we move on, um, there's been some confusion around the full membership of the facility subcommittee. Which is becoming increasingly destructive and problematic. And in order to rectify that, I'd like to make a motion to limit. Membership of the facilities, budget, policy, and communication subcommittees. To the school committee members who have been voted on to those committees, um, that have been since on or since July second, twenty twenty five. And to not have numbers of the public service and other public facilities, budget, policy, communications, so.
Second.
So I know where this is going. This is clear. This is I chose to address this. Um, the facility subcommittee has always had members of the public central batteries. That have participated since the inception of facilities. In fact, we dedicated our organ garden to a member of longtime member of that community who passed away. Um, so I understand the political aspect of this. I think there are other ways you could have addressed that. I think it's a mistake. That we don't have subject matter experts from the community who have consistently, and we've had met it over the years. Um. Involved because arguably, well, I shouldn't say they may be school committee members that have subject matter expertise. I don't know necessarily. I know, I don't. I don't know about Henry. And Mike himself even said, you know, like, he's not a subject matter expert. So. I think it's a mistake. I think it is not good governance. Do that. I think we've always um practiced that and it has helped us tremendously. Um. You know, Je- Jeff St. George and Jeremy Colander were um great members of that committee and helped them that long-term sort of master. Plan, I guess, for lack of a better word that we have, is, but we not have, but for those members. Um, so.
Jen, I don't think this much about about denying. Community members, but I think. According to our own policies. The the committee is meant to be school committee member.
And we have subsidies that have other members. The roof advisory committee, building subcommittees, there are subcommittees that have had, and facilities subcommittees are perfect example. We're not the only school district that does that. So I just, I'm, I understand what you're trying to do. But I think it's a mistake to do it this way because we're setting a precedent that is going to limit us as far as our ability. To really do what's best for our facility.
I didn't, I didn't, I'm just, I'm going, but I I view it as. You know, as as they're written. We just, you know, voted on is they're high level. These are high level committees, right? They shouldn't really be mired down in managing projects. And when that's necessary. Form up another subcommittee and put the appropriate subject matter expertise and community members on that. And I think that would be something we need to continue to do. As is appropriate.
Yeah, but I'm going to push back on that and say that, um. The facility subcommittee has never managed one. But the facility subcommittee has done, which is listed here, is, you know, review the capital requests. Establish a long-term master plan, which was done. Um, that was done. With input from such a president. Okay, good.
I think a master plan is a perfect example of a place that we could. Put together. Tax-oriented committee, you know, specifically to develop one. The one that you're part of.
So you would not have a facility subcommittee doing a master plan? That has been part of what the facilities.
Ministering.
But the facilities ma- subcommittee has traditionally been tasked with creating master.
All right, they could. Solicit input from others, I would think. We're not prohibiting that from happening.
With the roof committee, we open this up to members of the public to apply for their role on this committee.
We could certainly, that's what we've done in the past with the facilities. We can certainly do that.
Uh, but we haven't.
We haven't because we haven't had. We had one person left, two, two people left. They were longtime members. From many years.
Any further discussion? All of them favorite the motion? Uh, all those against? Okay, the motion passes for. Are are any other items around subcommittees? Exactly, um. Just in closing, um. I mentioned this already, but we, uh, you know, Jen, your your point is valid. We do want to focus on our school committee goals, uh. Uh, so, uh, that would be the predominant focus of the September thirtieth meeting. And then the October meetings, a component of those will be the superintendent's evaluation and goal setting and. You know, we'll see where we are around the district plan at that particular time. So that's just to give a, not give a kind of. Yeah. Idea of what we, what we'll talk about at the future school committee meetings. All right, um. Okay.
So under correspondence. Um.
Yes.
Uh, you skipped every.
Correspondence, please.
Is it possible to get a copy of the letter that was sent to the family of. Or if I could get a copy of?
Um, should have. I didn't draft. So I know John said one.
We voted that.
I I met, I met.
We voted that, yeah, October.
I've been drafted. Any other correspondence? Okay, I'm looking for a motion and vote to meet in executive session for the following reasons. Executive session pursuant to chapter thirty eight, second twenty one, A three, purpose three, to discuss litigation Marvel Head School Committee and Marvel Teachers Association and U P L. Dash twenty four dash one zero five seven zero. As an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the school committee and the chair, so declares. Executive session pursuant to chapter thirty eight, section twenty one, A three, purpose three, to discuss threatened litigation by a former student services chairperson. Lawrence Skelton learned it's an open meeting. They have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the school committee. And then chair so declares without intent to return to the session. Executive session pursuant to chapter thirty eight, section twenty one, A three, purpose three, to discuss litigation. Marvel Head School Committee and Marvel Teachers Association, W M A M dash twenty five dash one one five seven four. As an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the school committee and the chair, so declares. Without intent to return to open session. By the way, the first paragraph, I should have also said without intent to to return to open session. Executive session pursuant to chapter thirty eight, section twenty one, A three, purpose three, to discuss litigation Marvel and School Committee. And Marvel and Teachers Association, W M A M dash twenty five dash one one five seven five is an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect. On the litigating position of the school committee and the chairs of declares without intent to return to open session. Executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, chapter thirty eight, section twenty one, A one, for the following purpose. Discuss complaints brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual, O M I, complaints, the M E A.
I mean.
Second. Okay, all in favor? All right, the motion passes five zero. So uh, chair statement, um, committee will now be meeting in the executive session pursuant to chapter thirty eight, section twenty one, A three, purpose. Discuss litigation Marvel Head School Committee and Marvel Teachers Association. M U P L dash twenty four dash one zero five seven zero is an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the school committee and the chair, so declares without intention to turn to session. We will also be meeting an executive session pursuant to chapter thirty eight, section twenty one, A three, purpose three, to discuss. Written litigation by former student services chairperson Lawrence Skelton learned is an open meeting and a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the school committee and the chairs of declares. Without intent to return to the session. We will also be meeting an executive session pursuant to chapter thirty eight, section twenty one, A three, purpose three, to discuss litigation. Marvel Head School Meeting and Marvel Teachers Association, W M A N twenty five dash one one five seven four. Is an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the school committee and the chairs of the plans without intent to return to the session. We'll also be meeting an executive session pursuant to chapter thirty eight, section twenty one, A three, purpose three, to discuss litigation. Marvel Head School Committee and Marvel and Teachers Association, that will be M A M twenty five dash one one five seven five. It's an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the school committee and chairs of declares. Without intent to return to open session. We'll also be meeting an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, chapters thirty A, section twenty one, A one. For the following purpose, to discuss complaints brought against a public officer, employee, and staff member or individual. O M I, complaint, M E A. We are now in executive session. For that, for that, this is where we're at here.